All right. Right for the flag flip? Not something we do every day. Maybe I ought to. All right. Um, agenda we had, or roll call, sorry, roll call. Please.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Magyar.
Here.
Commissioner Satnovich.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Linder.
Here.
Commissioner Ittika.
Here.
And Chair Crusher.
Present. All right. So, we may have a slight change to the agenda. Um, we need to address a vice chair. Do we, Gail, will we do that now, or would we, what, how do we enter this into the agenda?
I would suggest someone makes a motion to amend the agenda to add, um, like, item eight, which would be election of vice chair.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda to add item eight to, uh, elect a vice chair.
I would make that motion to add item eight to elect a vice chair.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Um.
I'll second that.
All those in. We already had a second. We're working on it. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right. We will amend the agenda and add item eight, uh, at the end to, uh, address and elect a vice chair. Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I move we adopt agenda as amended.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? All right. We have adopted the agenda. All right. Uh, business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda, or the adopted agenda, I should say. Anybody? Anybody in Zoom land? No? All right. So we have three public hearings today. Um, we are going to go right into our first public hearing. Um, item number two on the agenda is ordinances twenty-four dash sixteen, twenty-four dash seventeen, and twenty-four dash eighteen, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers expanded flow line thallweg dredged material disposal. Um, okay. So do I before or during or?
We haven't opened the public hearing yet, so.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, opening statement. Uh, this is a legislative hearing regarding ordinances twenty-four sixteen, twenty-four seventeen, twenty-four eighteen, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers expanded flow line thallweg dredged material. Um, does any commissioner have a conflict of interest to report? Seeing none. Uh, does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time? No. All right. Staff report. Will the staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, for the record, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Uh, this morning, we are considering three ordinances. Uh, ordinance twenty-four sixteen is an exception request for goal sixteen, estuarine resources. Ordinance twenty-four seventeen is a proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan. And ordinance twenty-four eighteen are text amendments to both the comprehensive plan and the land use, land and water development and use code, the law deck. Uh, next slide, please, Rebecca. So, uh, more specifically, ordinance twenty-four sixteen, which will address an exception to goal sixteen, uh, consists of, uh, three parts. Uh, first of all, is to revise, uh, what the definition of flow lane is and where that occurs in the river, the Columbia River in particular. Uh, right now, our flow lane disposal, uh, is classified as the federal navigation channel plus six hundred feet on either side of that channel. The request would be to expand that, uh, so that areas that are also deeper than twenty feet in depth, uh, depth could be considered part of the flow lane if they're immediately contiguous. And, uh, what happens then is that may place the part of that expanded flow lane into areas that are designated conservation. And we will talk a little bit more about that, uh, in just a few minutes, but that is the, uh, basic reason and the request for the goal exception. Uh, the request would also, uh, seek to allow in-water dredge disposal downstream of the Megler Bridge in areas that are deeper than sixty-five feet in depth. And then to allow that expanded flow lane area to be available, both to the U.S. Army Corps and to other dredging users as well. So that's a basic summary of ordinance twenty-four sixteen. Uh, ordinance twenty-four seventeen would, again, amend the comprehensive plan to include an informational map that shows the expected area of that expanded flow lane thallweg area in the Columbia River over in a five-year period. And then, uh, ordinance twenty-four eighteen includes the required amendments that would update, um, both our implementing ordinances in the law duck and the policies related to the sub-areas in goal sixteen estuarine resources. Next slide, please. So, for a little bit of background, um, the reason that this has come before you this morning is that, uh, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has a congressional mandate to maintain, uh, operations within the Columbia River Federal Navigation Channel, the FNC. And part of that requirement includes them to do ongoing dredging and disposal of dredge material, either in upland areas, beach nourishment areas, ocean disposal, or in-water disposal. And we'll talk about all of those in a little bit more detail as we get further into the, uh, report. So, as part of that, obviously, there's quite a bit of trade that depends upon the navigation channel being functional. Uh, if sholing occurs, then there are draft restrictions that get placed, uh, on the federal navigation channel, which means that ships above a certain size may not be able to use the channel, either to go upstream or deliver goods back downstream for export. Uh, the, uh, it's estimated by the applicant and the materials provided that that trade value is approximately twenty-three million annually and that, um, a variety of products, including, uh, things such as soy, wheat, corn grain, forest mineral products, are all transported via the river. So, um, that's kind of the overview of what happens with the, with the Columbia River. And the Army Corps, again, has, uh, this congressional mandate to maintain the federal navigation channel and, and ensure that the ships are, the channel remains navigable. And so, every ten years, the Army Corps, uh, adopts a new operations and maintenance plan. And in 2023, they, in preparation for their new ten-year plan, they submitted an application to the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, for a four oh one water quality certification. And as part of that review, uh, it was determined that, over the course of approximately thirteen years, beginning around 2010, that the Army Corps had changed its practices, uh, in how they disposed of dredge material within that flow lane area. Those changes, which were intended to better manage, um, the, the navigation channel, to reduce the amount of dredging that they had to do, to reduce the amount of sholing, uh, those new practices put, um, the Army Corps out of compliance with Clasip County's codes and requirements and our definition of the flow lane. And so, subsequently, the county wasn't able to sign off on the land use compatibility statement for the water quality certification. And, uh, following that, DEQ could not issue the water quality certification because of that lack of consistency. And so that's really, um, is what prompted the submission of these applications. Uh, next slide, please, Rebecca. Um, so we, we started this ongoing discussion with the Army Corps, with state staff, um, and that has brought us here to this point. And, uh, next slide, please. So you can see on this picture, this, the area that is labeled AD is zoned aquatic development. It's an area that's designated for development, which are more intense uses, and that is currently what we define in Clasip County as the flow lane. So the federal navigation channel, six hundred feet on either side. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the informational thallweg map that was, uh, prepared to support this application. You can see that, um, it increases the, the width of the area considered flow lane in some areas. You can see it expands a bit up to the north, uh, as you come in from the mouth of the Columbia. And then up where the map is labeled Altoona, you will see that there's a little bit, um, more thallweg that has been added there that is not part of what would have been designated flow lane. And that's actually in Washington State, so we don't need to worry about it. Um, next slide, please. So this, uh, shows the current zoning that the county has on the Columbia River. And it seems a little odd, but we zone the water just like we zone the land. So, um, every inch of Clasip County has some sort of designation on it, whether it's aquatic or land-based. And so you can see on here, uh, starting at the mouth of the Columbia River, you can see the flow lane, which is kind of the, the medium grayish, dark grayish, um, line that runs through the river. And then you'll see these lighter blue areas on either side. Those are areas that are designated conservation, and they are zoned aquatic conservation too. So, these are the areas, not, not all the blue, but some of the blue, uh, where you, we would have the goal exception apply, where that thallweg flow lane definition is being expanded to include more area, that, uh, areas that are designated conservation. So I'm going to stop right there for just a moment, just to see if anybody on the Planning Commission has any questions about what's been presented so far, because we're going to cover a lot of material here, so don't wait if you have questions. Yes?
I have a question. Um, two questions. What happens after five years? And isn't some of this area part of the National Wildlife Refuge?
Yes. So, yes, part, part of the areas are National Wildlife, uh, Refuge, or in close proximity to. And, uh, the five years, we will, uh, discuss more, but that is one of our conditions of approval. We understand that our definition is static. So our map is static, it doesn't change. The river is constantly changing, even as we speak, things are moving around. And so we understand that, um, the flow lane, as we define it today, and the thallweg expanded flow lane, as we're proposing to define it, will constantly shift in reality. And so, the thallweg map, if you would go back one slide, please, Rebecca. This map here is for informational purposes only. And what we are going to rely on would be the written definition that defines the flow lane as the federal navigation channel, the six hundred feet on either side, and then areas contiguous to that that are at least twenty feet in depth. So that, that would be what we would rely on. Um, there has been discussion, um, and you'll see that this has resulted in some changes to the conditions that we'll talk about in a little bit, and a new finding for the staff report. Um, but, uh, we all want to make sure that this informational map is kept up to date and that, you know, forty years doesn't go by and we haven't updated it. Um, so we are, um, working with a variety of, uh, state agencies to, um, make sure that that is accomplished on a regular basis. And, uh, if need be, we do have staff from Department of Land Conservation and Development here who could address that further if you have additional questions.
Does, has the, uh, wildlife refuge weighed in on this application at all?
The wildlife refuge has not per se. They were given notification. Uh, when the application materials were submitted, they were, we had them reviewed by Department of Fish and Wildlife for completeness, and they reviewed the materials, including the biological opinions that were included. Uh, the Department of Fish and Wildlife did not have any comments necessarily, or concerns about the materials that were submitted. They requested a few conditions that should be included, but, um, no, no concerns about the, the impacts to, um, wildlife or, or habitat. Any other questions at this point before we move forward? Okay, hearing none. Uh, if you'd go, uh, forward again, next slide, please. Okay, so, um, to talk a little bit about the process and how this will work, we have nineteen statewide planning goals, eighteen of which are applicable to Clasip County. The only one that doesn't apply is goal fifteen, which deals with the Willamette Valley, uh, Willamette River Greenway. We're going to be focused today on goal sixteen, estuarine resources, and this is one of four goals that make up, um, the, the coastal goals in the statewide planning system. Next slide, please. And, uh, with those coastal goals, we also have, sitting on top of that, we have the Coastal Management Zone Act. And, uh, we in Clasip County are covered under the Coastal Zone Management Program. And as a result of that, uh, when federal activities are proposed within areas within the coastal zone, they have to show, the, the federal agency has to show to the greatest extent possible that they are consistent with the state's planning goals and with the local jurisdictions' requirements. And that's why that inconsistency that happened after 2010, when the Army Corps changed its practices to better manage the river, um, and then Clasip County's comp plan not matching, that's why that, uh, became an issue, and they could not get their water quality certification. Next slide, please. So, uh, goal sixteen is really focused on estuaries. We have three estuaries in Clasip County, the Columbia River, the Nekanicum River, and Ecola Creek. There, each of those estuaries has an individual management plan. Uh, the plans were adopted in the late seventies, early eighties. Some of them have been marginally updated at some point in the eighties. Many of them have not been updated for a good forty years. And that's the case with the Columbia River. When the estuary ma- management plans were created, they divided each, each estuary into three different categories. So you either have a natural estuary where the resources are of such quality that you don't want to have very much development in those areas. There are conservation estuaries where you have natural resources, but maybe they don't rise to the quality or level of, um, as much protection as you would see in a natural estuary. And then you have development estuaries, which is where the most intense type of activities are meant to occur. And so the Columbia River is a deep draft estuary, and it's classified as development. And so, obviously, we have the navigation channel, we have a lot of ship navigation up and down the river. Um, it's meant to be an area where you have more intense uses. But once you have classified the ca- the estuary, so we've got Columbia River, deep draft development estuary, the estuary itself gets broken into individual management units. So even though overall, the Columbia is intended for more intense development, it doesn't mean that every single area within the river should have that same level of development. And so the estuaries get broken into these management units that, you know, are also called natural conservation and development. And they follow that same set of reasoning. Natural is where you want to have the most protection. Conservation is where you want some level of, excuse me, protection. But it may be appropriate that some more intense development occurs in those areas. And then you have areas that are straight-out development, like the flow lane, where you've got the most intense activity. Next slide, please. And this just shows in writing, in a graphic form, that the Columbia River estuary is indeed a deep draft development estuary. Um, next slide, please. So, when a goal exception is processed, we have to look not only at, um, Oregon administrative rules as part of that, and we'll, we'll go into a much deeper discussion about that in a bit, but we also want to make sure that the request is consistent with the statewide planning goal, with, um, our comprehensive plan, and our land use implementing ordinances. And also, because the county is the keeper of estuary plans, and the request in this case will impact areas outside unincorporated Clasip County, so the cities of Astoria and Warrenton, we need to make sure that, um, their plans are updated as well. And they will be following a separate process and pathway, uh, as we complete our process. They will follow behind us. And again, we just want to make sure that, um, our implementing regulations, the law duck, are consistent with what's being proposed, hence the need for the text amendments and the map amendments. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. So before we, we jump into goal exceptions, any, uh, questions about federal consistency, the process, um, the classification of the estuaries?
So you said the, the cities have to be on board with what we're doing. So if we accept all this, and then they, they have to go through the same process after we're done, or?
Yes. So they will also be going through the same process. If needed, they will process goal exception, they may need to process map amendments and the text amendments. This, generally, our plans should all be consistent and not conflict with each other. But again, as you get into independent jurisdictions, we have things that are outside of our control. And, so they are following a separate process. The city of Astoria is doing theirs administratively, um, just as an in-house thing, they have taken the initiative on it. The city of Warrenton, um, has had, uh, I guess Department of State Lands as their applicant as well. And they are working through some comments that they had on the application materials specific to the city of Warrenton. So they will be following us after we have completed this. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. So then we shall plunge into goal exceptions. Uh, so as I mentioned, the, the state has nineteen statewide planning goals that cover a variety of topics, transportation, estuaries, housing, recreational lands, um, everything you could pretty much think of. And at the time that the statewide planning system was set up, there was a realization that there may be times when a goal may not or should not apply to a specific project. And so as part of that, there is a process that applicants can choose to go through to request what's called a goal exception. It's basically saying, this goal should not apply to us, we should be exempt from it. And, um, it's very similar to a variance in that there are certain criteria you'll have to meet and demonstrate that you meet those criteria in order to be able to be approved. And there are three types of goal exceptions. Uh, the, one is when your land is already physically developed and can't comply with the requirements of a, of a particular planning goal. Uh, we see this most often, uh, with, uh, goal three agricultural lands and goal four forest lands. Uh, same thing if your land is irrevocably committed. So maybe my land isn't fully developed or developed at all, but all the surrounding area has been in a way that would not support me being able to meet a particular goal. So, when we talk about our rural residential lands, the RA one, two, through five, ten, those are all goal exception lands, where, when the comp plan was adopted, an exception was taken to goals three and four that said, yes, we understand that around us is forest land for the most part, but the lands here have already been developed, they've got housing on it, they're, you know, we have subdivisions planted out, you know, in Hamlet. So goal, a goal exception was processed for those areas. So, what we're talking about today, though, is not going to fall under those two, it's going to fall under the third type of goal exception. And it's called a reasons exception. And the reason it's a reasons exception is because the applicant has to provide reasons for why the goal should not apply. So, pretty, pretty straightforward concept. Um, this is spelled out in OAR six sixty, division four, at section twenty. And there are four reasons that an applicant, um, needs to show that they meet in order for a goal exception to be eligible for approval. And I've taken a, a very, um, I've summarized them here, uh, but you can read them, they start, I believe, I forget what page, uh, have it written down later, but they are spelled out in full in your staff report. But basically, what the applicant needs to demonstrate, um, they need to give us the reasons why the goal should not apply to their particular project. They have to show that there are no other areas available within the jurisdiction that they could do this project and not have to get a goal exception. They have to show that, um, after they've taken steps to mitigate for their project, that the impact on their site would not be any greater than on another site that also required a goal exception. And then they have to show, um, that their project is compatible with the adjacent uses. And so those are the four things that we really want to focus on. Um, we do, again, make sure that it's consistent with our comp plan, with our implementing policies, and that's laid out in your staff report, and we have found that it is consistent or can be consistent with our comp plan policies and our law duck. But today, I really want to focus on the four goal exception criteria. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this is the first criteria. This is the one that says, uh, what are the reasons why your project should be exempt from this particular goal? So, in this case, the request is for an exception to goal sixteen, the requirements of, um, the estuary plans, the estuarine resources. And, uh, beginning on page sixty-five of your agenda package, you can see this analysis. And, uh, the applicant has provided three primary reasons why this goal should not be applicable to, um, the dredging and in-water disposal of dredge material. And the first one is that, um, a big part of the reason why the Army Corps changed its practices and began using this expanded flow lane thallweg area, is that there is a limited amount of sediment that comes into the river. And part of the goal is to maintain what's called a sediment budget. So you don't want the sediment that comes in off the land, um, flowing out into the ocean where it can't be recaptured by the river, or being placed upland where it may not re-enter the river anyway, because it's on an upland portion, it may never get that runoff or washed down into the river. And because the river's sediment is a finite resource, and because of, um, as stated in the application, because of development in the flood plain, um, and other factors, there is less sediment that flows into the river. And it seems a bit contradictory, contradictory when you think about dredging, and we need to have more area for dredge disposal, but we have this limited sediment. But the reason is, we, we have all the sediment, but we just don't want it flowing out to sea. We want to be able to keep it within the confine of the river and the estuary. Um, and that's part of the habitat process and, um, making sure that the health of the estuary is maintained as well. So that's one reason. Uh, the second reason, um, is that if you confine your in-water disposal simply to that flow lane area that the county has defined, the federal navigation channel, six hundred feet on either side, there's limited capacity. And what happens is then the sediment returns more quickly and causes more sholing, which in turn increases the need for more dredging and then more dredge disposal. So, um, and then the, uh, third reason is that, and this, I think, I combined with number two, um, is that confining it just to that federal navigation channel, that flow lane area, um, does result in increased sholing. So by being able to spread it out further, and you have different hydraulics working on the movement of that sediment, you have the ability to control and reduce sholing more than you would if it was just dumped straight into the flow lane. Okay. And when we talk about, um, the area that we're, we're looking at, we're looking at approximately twenty-three thousand, uh, I think, if I remember correctly, it's a million cubic yards per year. Um, and we're looking, the, the applicant would be looking, or the Army Corps would be looking at using approximately a tenth of that every year of those twenty-three thousand acres out in the estuary. Any questions about, uh, the first goal exception criteria and the reasons provided? Nope. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, so the second criteria deals with this concept of, are there other places available within the county where this water, this dredge material could be placed in water that would not require a goal exception? And so the only place that we have in the county that would meet that is the flow lane. And we've already heard from the applicant that there's not enough capacity, that it, you know, at times increases the rate of sholing and causes that, um, sediment to deposit more quickly. So the- So the, in the application materials, there were five different areas that were examined that might not require a goal exception. So obviously, one is the flow lane, and then those aquatic development zones, which are basically synonymous. And then looking at places that are outside of the estuary, so maybe further upriver, where you're not considered part of the estuary, which runs to about River Mile 44, so looking upstream, or looking at upland disposal, or looking at ocean disposal. And so the applicant has stated in their materials that there is not enough capacity upstream to handle the volume of dredge material that they would need to dispose. So even though they might not need a goal exception up there, there isn't the capacity able to handle that, available to handle that. And then again, upland and ocean disposal, we've talked about briefly. Upland disposal may not allow sediment to re-enter the river, or maybe not at the rate that it might be needed to maintain the sediment budget. And if it's disposive in the ocean, there is, there are ocean disposal sites that have been approved that would not require a goal exception, but that would just be a permanent loss of that river sediment. And so to maintain that sediment budget, the applicant has stated these reasons as to why another area not requiring a goal exception would not be suitable. Any questions about those second criteria or the reasons stated by the applicant? Okay, next slide, please. So the third criteria that's in the OAR deals with whether or not this project, once it's been mitigated and parameters are established, would have any more impacts at their site than if they picked a different site and did the same parameters, and maybe they might have less of an impact for some reason. And I'm not enough of a biologist to give you a very good example, so I'm not going to give one. But what has been stated by the applicant, and they have three biological opinions that have been approved by the National Marine Fisheries Service stating that the activities that are proposed would not jeopardize the continued existence of endangered or threatened species, it's not going to destroy habitat critical to those species. So those biological opinions also include a lot of conditions of approval in terms of monitoring requirements, in terms of when work can occur and timing in the river, in the water. Read here what I'm looking for. And then part of this is that you, the work being proposed is water-dependent, so it really can't take place on land, it's got to be somewhere in the river area. And then we talked about the monitoring. So the applicant has stated that they believe that based on these biological opinions, the work that is done continually in the river, the review that they're under, the monitoring requirements, will not, will not result in any more adverse impacts in the area here in the estuary where they're proposing the work than if they were to do the same work somewhere else and ask for a similar goal exception. Does that make sense? Any questions about that third criteria? Okay. And then the last criteria, next slide, please, is they have to demonstrate that their project is going to be compatible with surrounding uses. And so we noticed that in the estuary, the surrounding uses are primarily water, there's going to be some conservation areas, there's going to be some natural areas that may be in close proximity to that expanded flow lane that's proposed. Again, in this case, the applicant is relying upon the approvals and conclusions and findings that are contained in the three biological opinions that have been issued by the National Marine Fisheries Service. Again, relying on those monitoring requirements, noting that areas that are greater than 20 feet in depth are usually not where you see this type of bentic activity where there could be impacts to fish. And the juveniles are more likely to be closer to shore in waters that are shallower than 20 feet, because that's more, that is their habitat that they prefer and where they would actually be most likely found. So they have concluded that they would be adjacent, they would be compatible with adjacent uses that are occurring in the estuary. And so they believe that they have met those criteria as well. And I will stop there about the fourth criteria, any question about that one or the conclusions? All right, seeing none, next slide, please. So staff, having completed the review and the findings in your staff report, have found that the proposed goal exceptions, the map amendment and the text amendments would be consistent or could be with conditions of approval, consistent with our comp plan, with the statewide planning goals, with the implementing ordinances in Clatsop County, and with the four goal exception criteria. We initially issued the staff report last week on October 1st with, I believe, seven conditions of approval. Following that, we had a follow-up conversation yesterday with staff from Department of Land Conservation, Department of State Lands, and the Army Corps of Engineers. And you'll notice with this application, it's not actually the Army Corps that's the applicant, although they will be the beneficiary of these changes if they're approved. And the reason for that is, as a federal agency, the Army Corps is not required to apply for or obtain permits, they just have to show consistency to the maximum extent practicable with our own regulations and the statewide planning goals. So Department of State Lands picked this one up and became the official applicant so that the application could be submitted. And when staff had worded the conditions of approval, it was very hard to separate, in my head, Army Corps, applicant, DSL, and just general conditions, because we know what the, what the beneficiary is, or who the beneficiary is, but they're not actually the applicant. So we can't really apply the conditions to them or to another agency such as Department of Land Conservation and Development, who's not a party to the application. So as a result of comments back and forth in yesterday's meeting, we have issued revised conditions, and they were forwarded to you yesterday. I've provided you with written copies, and there are also copies on the table if anybody from the public would like to look at those. But basically, there, we are down to five conditions now. One is that there should not be any in-water dredge material disposal that occurs either outside areas designated development, which would be the flow lane, or areas that are outside of this new goal exception if it's approved. So they would be limited to those two areas for in-water dredge disposal. The second criteria is that the in-water dredge disposal obviously would have to comply with any in-water work periods that were established in those biological opinions. Those in-water work periods may be different than standard in-water work periods that we think about, but they are spelled out in the biological opinions. And so whoever is dredging and disposing would need to comply with those requirements. The third condition of approval that's proposed is that any best management practices that have been identified in those biological opinions, particularly monitoring requirements, would also need to be complied with. We are proposing to delete condition of approval number four, which still applies, but it doesn't need to be spelled out necessarily as a condition of approval. In the changes that are proposed to the text of the law doc, we included proposed language that says you can do in-water disposal in the AC2 zone, the aquatic zone, aquatic conservation 2 zone, as long as you have an approved goal exception. So, and then as part of that, they would follow the process outlined in that section of that AC2 zone. So we didn't really need to spell it out here in the conditions of approval. We also recommended deleting the fifth criteria because the expanded flow lane thaw-wag area is not going to be in that Young Bay area adjacent to that fishery, than that pens, so it really wasn't applicable. Criteria number six just reiterates that the thaw-wag map, even though it's being adopted into the comp plan, if this is approved, is informational and that we will rely on that definition that's proposed for expanded flow lane thaw-wag. And then the final condition of approval is that we have a new informational map every five years. And again, as we discussed earlier, the county can't require DLCD to prepare that map because they're not a party to this application, and so we can't just arbitrarily force them into doing this. We have had discussions about how this would work in the future and who would be responsible. And DLCD is making a commitment to be that party, but again, we just can't name them in the condition and require them because they're not part of this application. Next slide, please. Okay, so you'll see that we also are proposing a new finding addressing the map issue. This would go in the findings under Section 2.8100, which deals with zone changes and map changes. And even though we're not rezoning the property, we're just allowing something to occur in the goal exception area that normally is not permitted, we're not rezoning the property. And so we've added some language here to help justify that requirement for the five-year update of the map. Next slide, please. Okay, so staff, this is our formal recommendation, that your planning commission recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the three ordinances, ordinances 24, 16, 17, and 18, and that you apply your approval conditioned upon the five conditions listed below, which we've just discussed. And so that concludes my presentation. Next slide, please. And again, just to reiterate, Astoria, Warrenton will follow their own pathways on this process. Depending the outcome of today's hearing with the planning commission, we will then schedule two more public hearings with our Board of Commissioners on October 23rd and November 13th. Next slide, please. And at this point, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, we do have staff from Department of Land Conservation and Development here if needed. We have staff from Department of State Lands, who I believe are on Zoom, and also representatives of the Army Corps, if you do have questions of them. Thank you.
Do you go back a couple? Motions? Motions?
Is that in our book? Is that in, I couldn't find it in here. The staff recommendation, is it in our packet?
Oh, probably not, because I think by the time I got to page, actually, it is, it should be on page, I don't know what page in the packet, but it's page 80 of the staff But this is, the one on the screen has the updated conditions of approval.
Okay.
One question of staff. So what will change, it seems like this is just a necessary thing for Army Corps of Engineers to continue dredging as they have been, but it just brings them into compliance. And they've been dredging on the Lower Columbia since the dams went in, I suppose, and the ongoing maintenance thing, they've done all sorts of, created islands out there. Also, along with that, it caused some problems with endangered species and bird habitat and other things, but this is just kind of a, I view this as a housekeeping issue that we've got to get them into compliance with our ordinance. And I guess I'd be ready to move forward with it.
Yeah, it's definitely a balancing act. Part of it is housekeeping, but again, even though the practice may have changed unbeknownst to the state or to the county staff, that we still need to look at potential impacts. So, you know, and the Army Corps has a mandate to maintain the channel, but also to, I'll say do no harm, that's not the exact phrase, but do no harm, provide beneficial use of the river, maintain the habitats, not impact the endangered species. So there's a lot going on here. And again, we had Fish and Wildlife staff review the application materials for completeness. Their review did not reveal any concerns or potential impacts that might not have been identified. We have the sign-off from the National Marine Fisheries Service from 2012, 2018, 2021, and 2023, I believe. And as staff, we don't have enough expertise to interpret this, so we do rely upon the opinions of people who do have that knowledge, so.
I had a couple of questions or comments, or it'd be number five in the conditional, conditions, approval conditions?
Yeah.
Because we're striking out two of them, correct?
Yeah.
So DLCD says that, or has acknowledged that they would take responsibility, but it can't be stated for the five-year update on the map. Is that not a continual, almost everyday thing where they're out there mapping the river and doing, because I'm sure that they can't just go out there every five years, run up and down the river one time and call it good. It's got to be a pretty detailed map of the river. And if, if it doesn't say in here who's responsible, is it, is it then essentially going to be the county's responsibility if everybody just throws their hands up and says, sorry, it's not in there? You know what I mean? If we don't define it, but they can't be defined as being responsible? Do you understand what I'm?
Yes, and we had quite a robust discussion about this yesterday. So I will provide you with the county staff thoughts on this, and then I don't know if DLCD has anything they wanted to offer, but, or maybe anybody who's online. So there is a concern that, obviously, we want to make sure that whatever dredging is occurring by whatever party is doing the dredging and disposing of the material remains in compliance with our rules here in the county and the statewide planning goals. We have been involved in this process for well over a year and a half. There are some other items that are ongoing that will probably come back to you at a different time on a different project, but we don't want to find ourselves in this position again. And so we also realize that the river is constantly shifting, it's very dynamic, we are working with a static map. I will guarantee you the thaw-wag informational map that I showed you today, which was prepared a few months ago, is already out of date. The Army Corps does do regular hydrological surveying, and you can pull those up on their website, they're available to the public. And every time that they are working on a project, they update those surveys, so they are as current of information that's available and that we could use. I don't know that we, as the county staff, would be able to pull these maps together. We probably could, we have an excellent GIS team. But we would just like to have something as staff in the comp plan that basically says, this is the general area, and we are trying to make, we're trying to develop a process so that it doesn't fall through the cracks, because obviously, none of us are in our positions forever, and personnel will change and things will happen. But we're trying to work that process out. And so this, this is the best compromise that we could come up with at this point. And we're still working, you know, at a staff level to figure out how that will happen every five years. And I don't know if I've interpreted that correctly, if you want to add anything. We have Lisa Seps from Department of Land Conservation and Development here today.
The way that I'm interpreting it is, the applicant would be responsible for this, whoever the applicant may be, and as a condition of their approval, however they get that map, they'll be responsible for obtaining that. Is that, is that kind of what it breaks down to?
The, the conditions, you're correct, apply to the applicant. The applicant in this case is Department of State Lands, only because Department of State Lands owns the bottom of the river. They are not necessarily hydrologists, I may be disparaging to State Lands people, no offense meant, but this, this isn't really something that they want to take on. They undertook the application on behalf of the Army Corps, simply because staff did not have, county staff did not have the capacity to just undertake this whole process administratively like Astoria is doing, we just couldn't undertake it. So DSL stepped in to fill that void. I don't know that DSL would do that again, but they are the official applicant, the conditions of approval apply to the applicant. And again, I don't know, would you mind if Lisa Seps comes up from DLCD to further offer her opinion, her viewpoint? her viewpoint?
Lisa Phipps, manager for the Oregon Coastal Management Program and the Ocean and Coastal Services for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And thank you first for hearing this today and for allowing me a moment to speak. Director Hendrickson did a really good job of presenting this really difficult goal exception to the Planning Commission. I just want to say that in your findings, it does indicate that conversations took place with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and that we indicated that we would likely be able to have the capacity to prepare those maps when the time comes. I would also say that we've also talked about kind of formalizing on the side an agreement with the, with Classup County that simply says, you know, the standards that were removed as one of the conditions, those will be included in the enforceable policies, and that's part of the federal consistency review, that the agency and the coastal management program agreed to prepare these maps, you know, barring, I suppose something could happen. But that's our intent. So just formalizing those agreements on the side so that when staff changes, because it will, it's in the file, and it's really clear who has what expectations. So that's how we're trying to address that without creating a condition that's actually not enforceable.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public testimony. At this time, it's called for public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity?
Specificity.
Thank you. To afford the decision maker and the property, or parties, and opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Board or to Luba based on that issue. All speakers from the floor are to sign in. We ask Zoom members that you would raise your hand if you would like to, like to make a comment. We are going to, before everybody raises their hand online, we are going to take public agencies online first, and then we'll take public comments second. So if you're a part of the public, please do not raise your hand yet. If you are a public agency and you do want to speak online, you guys are going to be first. State your name and address before speaking. If you are appearing in a representative, representative capacity, identify who you represent. We will limit the remarks to a reasonable period of time, which we've established as three minutes, in order to permit all present an equal opportunity to speak. At this time, are there any public agencies that would like to comment on this issue, either in person or online?
Yeah, Commissioners, this is Bill Ryan from the Department of State Lands, and I'd just like to make a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Well, good morning, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Bill Ryan. I'm Deputy Director of the Aquatic Resource Management Division at the Oregon Department of State Lands. And the department owns and manages the navigable waterways of Oregon, including the Columbia River, the bed and the banks of those water bodies. And we manage those on behalf of the people of Oregon to protect the public trust values of navigation, fishing, commerce, and recreation. And as, as Director Hendrickson shared, maintenance of the federal navigation channel by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is essential to enable the continuation of those trust values and to the state's economic well-being. And as owners of the bed and banks of the Columbia, DSL is applying for this goal exception to ensure that ongoing dredging of the federal navigation channel and disposal of dredged materials is conducted in an environmentally responsible manner and in compliance with state and local regulations. We've been working in partnership with the Corps, DLCD, and county planning staff to prepare the goal amendment materials, and we appreciate the Planning Commission's consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak as far as public agencies? All right, we have a couple in person. Mr. Riston, would you like to speak?
I think she may have left.
Eric?
And Eric, I think was online, wasn't he? Rebecca?
Greg Glaugh.
Rebecca, I don't know if the people who are just attendees, I don't know if they have a raise hand function. So there'll have to be a different way to be able to identify.
Attendees on Zoom should have a raised hand function. So if there's anybody else who would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, and I can promote you to a panelist.
I don't see this person online. Anyway. Okay. We're not seeing anybody else online. I don't see attendees. Anybody else? Lisa Phipps, would you like to comment again, or?
Only if you have a question.
Okay, not seeing any more public agencies. Are there any comments from the public? Please raise your hand, either, or in Zoom. See anybody? Nobody? All right. There being none, we're going to close public comment, correct?
Correct.
All right. 10:56. Are there any public agencies that wish to respond? Probably not, because there was no comment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Staff, does staff wish to respond to nothing?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are there any final questions? Witness or staff, witnesses or staff, from any Commissioners? Guess I closed it a little too soon. Okay, at this time, the discussion is open for Planning Commission members. Does any Planning Commission members have anything that they would like to discuss, comments, bring up? Anybody online? I see none. Nobody wants to make a comment. All right. Someone say something, no. All right, I guess at this time, is there a motion? I would, I would request a motion to either adopt this as, as provided, stable it. Any, any sort of motions that we can entertain from the Commissioners?
I'll make that motion. I move that the Classup County Planning Commission recommend the Board of, Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve the following subject to conditions one through five below. Do I need to read all those out?
I would say none.
I think that we, we have it right here. It's, it's on public record. We, we know exactly what we're talking about. So I, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have, we have two seconds. All right. Sean was first, so we'll go with his second. Are there any discussions? No. All right, let's put the motion to a vote, and if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Magyar?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutnovich?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Linder?
Aye.
Commissioner Iteka?
Aye.
And Chair Kreshar?
Aye. All right. With all ayes, the, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. And then just as a reminder, we will have two more public hearings with the Board of Commissioners on October 23rd and November 13th.
Okay. Does anybody need a break before we go into the next public hearing? No, we're good? All right. So now we're going to go into our line item agenda number three, or sorry, yeah, sorry. Ordinance 24-14, the law doc housing amendments. This is a legislative hearing regarding ordinance 24-14, law doc housing amendments. Does any Commissioner have a conflict of interest to report? Hearing none. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the Commission to hear this matter at this time? None, hearing none. All right. Will staff report, please make their report?
Thank you. Again, for the record, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Ordinance 24 has been something that staff has been working on at the direction of the Board of Commissioners since about October of last year. So we're about a year into this project. Next slide, please, Rebecca. Okay, so yes, we started in October of last year. And what the Board had directed staff to do is to develop a package of amendments to the code that would help to facilitate housing construction at all price points. It doesn't mean that these amendments will guarantee housing construction at all price points. Obviously, there are many factors in the world of housing development that are well outside the control of the county. And what our amendments are intended to do are to provide more options and tools to the development community to be able to meet the housing needs of Classup County. We'll see that as we go through the amendments, that we have focused revisions primarily on our rural communities. And I will discuss that more and discuss the differences between rural communities and rural residential lands a little bit later in this presentation. We held an initial public meeting after several workshops with the Boards, we had, with the Board, we had a public meeting on January 17th of this year. We have posted the initial draft of the comments at the end of May and held a public comment period that closed on July 21st. As part of that, notices mailed to all special districts. And you'll see that the notices that were mailed, along with the comments received prior to July 21st, are included in your agenda package today as Exhibits Four and Five. We published draft two of the proposed housing amendments following work sessions with the Board and your Planning Commission, and those were published on August 26th of this year. After the, next slide, please. After the agenda package was published on October 1st, you'll see that you, or you won't see, because I didn't give you paper copies, but you were emailed three sets of public comments that were received after the agenda package was distributed. One was from Timothy Ramey, who wrote in support of the proposed amendments. And then we had comments from John and Maria Meyer, and from the Oregon Coast Alliance in expressing concerns and opposition to some of the proposed amendments. So the amendments themselves, as I mentioned earlier, are really focused on the five rural communities that were established in 2003 in unincorporated Classup County. Those are the communities of Napa, Swenson, Westport, Miles Crossing, Jeffers Gardens, and the Arch Cape area. And what the amendments summarize, what they would do is, within those rural communities, we're looking at adding additional types of housing product as permitted uses within those zones. And so right now, where the code may only allow a single-family unit or a duplex unit, we are looking to add things such as triplex, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and in certain zones, employee housing. We would propose reducing minimum required lot sizes in those rural communities that are being served by water and/or community sewer. We are not making any changes to the rural residential lands. And then we would also propose changing the approval process for some types of housing, where right now, for example, a duplex may require a conditional use permit, a public comment period. We would propose changing that to a type one, which would be basically a, an over-the-counter permit without the public comment period. And then creating new setbacks to apply to those new housing types, establishing new parking requirements for the different housing types. And then specifically, I do want to point out that staff has included language that would prohibit using employee housing residences that are provided for a caretaker or a manager of a property, and employee housing and cottage clusters from being used as short-term rentals. And the reason for that is that we are trying to promote housing that addresses a workforce deficit for our employees within the county, allowing those types of units that are specifically focused on providing that type of housing for our workforce. It just seemed to make sense to limit short-term rental opportunities in those types of housing product. And also concurrent with this set of housing amendments, our Board is also moving forward with a potential cap on short-term rental units across unincorporated Classup County. That ordinance will be going forward in November and December this year and to two separate public hearings. Okay, so I will pause there for just a moment. We did include a very detailed walkthrough of each and every change that is proposed. This is obviously a very overarching summary, but are there specific questions about the changes in the specific zones at this point? And if not, then I'll move on to a little bit of discussion and differentiation between rural communities and rural residential lands. Okay, so next slide, please. Okay, so rural communities and rural residential lands, even though they sound like they're the same thing, are two very different type of concepts under statewide land use planning. So rural communities are regulated under Oregon Administrative Rules 660, Division 22. And Rebecca, I don't know if you can move your Planning Commission thing, image here. Thank you. Rural residential lands have, have a different set of OARs, 660, Division 4, that spell out how rural lands can be used. Rural communities, again, we have five within the county, Westport, Arch Cape, Miles Crossing, Jeffers Gardens, Napa, and Swenson. And they are a Goal 3, 4 exception area, which means that they are physically developed and irrevocably committed and cannot comply with the requirements of Goal 3 agricultural lands or Goal 4 forest lands. And so, an unincorporated community has its own definition in OAR. And under OAR 660, 22, subsection 30, subsection 2, county plans and land use regulations are allowed to authorize any residential use and density in unincorporated communities. And so that is part of what we are doing with these proposed housing amendments here today. Rural residential lands, on the other hand, even though they are in the same Goal 4 exception area as rural communities, they often are not served by community water, not, and they are not served by community sewer. And since October 4th of 2000, there has been a minimum two-acre requirement for new parcel sizes in a Goal, on rural residential lands. So that, you'll notice that while we have proposed reducing minimum lot sizes in our rural communities, we have not proposed reducing lot sizes on rural residential lands. That's the RA 1, 2, 5, 10, and single-family residential 1 zones that are in unincorporated county. And we do have one exception to that, which is ordinance 3-11. So in addition to being a Goal 3, 4 exception area, the Cove Beach area, south of Arch Cape, Arcadia Beach, and portions of the Classup Plains also have a Goal 14 exception. Goal 14 is urbanization, and that goal deals specifically with how lands are converted from rural or resource use over into urbanizable land and more intense development. So we've proposed minimal changes on those lands that also have the Goal 14 exception, and those are covered in detail in your staff report and the supporting materials. So any questions, first of all, about the difference between rural communities and rural residential lands? Okay, seeing none. Next slide, please. Okay, again, we talked about the public comments. You have the three that were emailed to you since last week. All of the comments we received prior All of the comments we received prior to that, and the July 21st deadline, are included in Exhibit 5 of your agenda package in the staff report. And again, the OARs require us to send notices to all the special districts, so those notices were also mailed on June 1st to all the different special districts. The only comments that we received were from the Falcon Cove Beach Domestic Water District, and those comments are included on Page 372 of your planning commission agenda package today. Next slide, please. All right, so I just wanted to provide a little extra comment and thought on this, maybe not so much thought, but as part, every time we amend our comprehensive plan or our law deck, we have to send what's called a post-acknowledgement plan amendment, or I think that's what it's called, it's a PAPA, a PAPA notice to DLCD. And that puts them on notice that the county is, or the jurisdiction is proposing changes to their code, and the state does review those changes and then either acknowledges them, or has comments, or may in some cases even escalated up to an appeal process. So we did submit our required PAPA to Department of Land Conservation and Development, and not to put any state staff on the spot, but I did have a conversation, both Jay and I had conversations with Brett Estes, who is our regional representative here on the North Coast for DLCD, just to talk about the state's review so far of the amendment package as proposed. And so, this is his response here, we received that last Friday on October 4th, basically stating that it does not look like we will be issuing any comments on the housing code amendments. So just to let you know that we have tried to work within the OAR and the state statutes and the state planning goals to make sure that our proposed amendments are compliant with those requirements. Next slide, please. And then, interestingly, and completely separate from all this, the county had started a code audit that was sponsored by DLCD to work with the issue of mass timber. And we were selected to participate in a code audit to see if there were items in our code or processes that might hinder the use of mass timber for housing construction. And this project was completely separate from this set of law deck amendments, but we got the initial set of recommendations back and had a meeting last week with DLCD staff and the consultant they had hired to do the code audit. And so, I just wanted to pull out a couple of the recommendations that had come out of that, and that we'll be talking about later at a separate date. But one of the things that was recommended is the county should include cottage clusters in all their residential zones, which is what we are proposing here. Next slide, please. That as part of a clear and objective approval path as required by ORS, that we should look at making mobile home parks, taking them out of a conditional use process, and moving them into a type 1 permitted use process, and having clear and objective standards to apply to their development, which are also part of these proposed amendments in the zones where mobile home parks are permitted. Next slide, please. And then finally, the, one of the other recommendations was that if the county does have cottage clusters, allowing them through a type 1 procedure, which would be over-the-counter permitting, we have not done that in this particular case. At this point cottage clusters are still conditional use, but the recommendation that's coming out of this mass timber code audit is actually recommending that they be a type 1. So that's something for your planning commission to consider if you choose. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it was just very interesting to see how independently, at the Board's direction, we had put together this set of amendments and then found that the same recommendations were coming out of a very different process that was completely separate from this entire law document process, so. Next slide, please. And that concludes this presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Any commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, nobody online, have any questions? All right. So call for public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Board or to Luba based on that issue. As before, all speakers are to sign in, attendees on Zoom, please hold your hands until after public agencies. State your name and address before speaking. If you are a representative capacity, please identify who you represent, and we will limit the remarks to three minutes in order to permit all present an equal opportunity to speak. At this time, are there any public agencies that would like to speak on behalf of this or regarding this, this Ordinance 24-14? Nobody's online that would like to speak, no public agencies? All right. Seeing no public agencies for comments, and I'm assuming there's quite a few people online that would like to speak, I can't see it, but we'll just randomly select you online if you raise your hand, and then we'll allow you your three minutes to speak. Again, please state your name and address before speaking. Are there any comments from the public, present or online? Is there anybody? Yeah, okay, sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, please state your name and your address.
Cameron LaFollette, Oregon Coast Alliance, PO Box 857 Astoria. I submitted written testimony for the hearing today, and so I'm not going to go over it in detail, give you a chance to read it. There are some administrative rules that, from the state, that the county really needs to pay attention to in processing these amendments. And perhaps the most serious one, but also the most nebulous, which also, of course, makes it the most difficult, is that amendments like this require a factual basis, and we haven't seen anything here that is, that really pinpoints some of the changes that the county is proposing that will have major effects on local unincorporated communities in Clatso County, that they have a good factual basis, especially as Director Henrickson knows, there's a lot of opposition to the proposal to change minimum lot sizes for single-family residences to 5,000 square feet in some of the rural communities, and we just have not seen any factual basis that proves, or even points to the idea that those, that change in particular would increase housing. But it will have a major effect on the livability and the structure and the look and the feel of communities where many hundreds of people live, and so we would ask you to not go forward with that particular amendment, especially unless there is a good, solid factual basis as required by Goal 2 of state law in order to underpin it. The other issue I just wanted to bring up briefly is, a major aspect of these changes is to quote-unquote streamline various types of application. But look at it, you know, from a developer's point of view, the public process is onerous and obnoxious and takes more time, and from the county's point of view, it takes more money. But from the public's point of view, you know, if you look at it from the point of view of the people who are living there, it's a major issue to wake up one morning and find that the bulldozers are moving next door on the vacant lot that you didn't even know somebody was interested in. Type 1 applications remove all public interest and all public opportunity. There's not, no notice, no right of public comment, and no right of appeal. So it completely removes the, whatever is, whatever type of application is made type 1, it completely removes it from any public process, even notice. And we don't think that that's a good thing to do under the land use laws. It's certainly not the way to build public confidence and ability to participate in their community.
Okay, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to cut you off, because your three minutes are up, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
All right, there. Another. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to make comments? Nobody? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna, oh wait. Do public agencies wish to respond? Well, nobody was from the public. Does staff wish to respond?
No, we do not.
Are there any final questions of witnesses or staff? Commissioners? I see none. At this time, at 11:21 a.m., public testimony. And we're going to open this up for discussion for the planning commission members. Any planning commission members have any points of interest or concerns, or anything that they would like to talk about regarding Ordinance 24-14, Law Deck Housing Amendments?
I had, sorry, I'm Henry Utica. I had one question, just a follow-up on Ms. Follette's concerns about the type 1 permit process. So, development in a type 1 permit process, how does, how does that process work as far as a review and? Somebody turns in an application, what's the step-by-step, and is there that type of developmental review that occurs for a housing development in a new property like this?
So a type 1 process would typically happen when an applicant brings their application and supporting documents to the counter, or emails them in. The, the application is reviewed against a set of clearly established and defined criteria. So, right now, every single-family home, unless it's in a resource zone, is a type 1 permit. So if you want to build a house, you're gonna come to our permitting counter, we are gonna look at your setbacks, we're gonna look at your building height, if a lot coverage is applicable, we would look at lot coverage. If you meet those criteria, then you are eligible to move on and get your building permits. Sometimes you may need to have a floodplain permit, sometimes you may need to have a geologic hazard permit, sometimes you need a grading permit in addition to your basic standards. If you have a conditional use, the, right now, so for example, a single-family home could come in as a type 1 over-the-counter permit. A duplex would be considered a conditional use in, I think, almost all of our zones right now. So what would happen is, you would come in, you would pay a $1,200 application fee, we would review your application for completeness, we would send it out for public notice, 10-day public comment period, it would come back, we would issue the staff report and findings, and then it would have a 12-day appeal period, and the decision could be appealed to the hearings officer, and then from there it could be appealed to the Board of Commissioners, and then to the Land Use Board of Appeals. But, and so, the point of a conditional use is when you are applying subjective criteria, you're making discretionary decisions. So in the case of a duplex, for example, the same thing that we're gonna look at are gonna be the required parking, there's a minimum parking requirement established, there are clear, clearly defined setbacks, building heights, lot coverage. So there's no discretionary decisions being made, it's based on established quantitative standards and not discretionary. A contrast to that would be, many of our businesses are permitted under a conditional use process, where we look at operational things such as hours of operation, if there's gonna be noise, odor, glare, sound, that might be created by that business. So areas where you may need to look on a case-by-case basis at things that cannot necessarily be quantified, there's not a good way to quantify an odor and, and say, this is the level of odor you're permitted to have. But in the case of a duplex, for example, there are very clearly defined, established objective standards, and so there really is no discretionary decision being made in a duplex type of decision for a housing, and so there's really not a need, at least as far as staff can see, for a conditional use to be applied. And I think as we are moving through, and the state progresses on its housing requirements, I think that that discussion will become more prominent, as we, the county now has to adopt clear and objective standards. And so you'll see that one of the recommendations that's coming out of the mass timber code up is that we should not be having housing as a conditional use, it should be as a type 1, and it should have clear and objective standards. There shouldn't be any discretion in how housing is permitted. And so, in our case in the county, it's much easier, we don't have design guidelines, we don't have things that are very subjective, so we don't require certain types of architectural features, we don't require certain types of landscaping, things like that. So we, we are very much more clear and objective, I think, than many other jurisdictions, but I think this is a pathway that we're gonna be going down in the future as well. And I'm not sure if that answered the question, but.
It answers mine, yeah, thank you.
I have a few questions, and it's more of just, you know, trading some things out. So if, if, if me as a homeowner, or a builder, or developer plans on building a house in one of these rural communities, and before I'm issued a land use permit, I'm gonna have to, and I'm just looking for clarification, do I have to get the fire department to sign off?
Yes, fire, water, and whoever's the septic sewer provider.
That's what I wanted to clarify, is fire, water. So if, if the water department that is that jurisdiction says, no, there's no water available, the land, the planning department is not gonna issue a, a land use permit to move forward with the building permits unless there is an ulterior or alternative method of obtaining water, fire protection, or sewer or septic, is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments, or anything for staff that they would like to discuss?
So right now, the county allows short-term rentals in, I forget how many zones, 16 or 17, I think, and they are, they follow a separate, they have a type 1 process, so basically over the counter. There is, once the permit's issued, notification to property owners within 300 feet, because they get the contact info for the short-term rental people, so that they have that contact info. The county is proposing to place a 10% cap on short-term rentals on areas west of Highway 101, and in all of Arch Cape, east and west of the highway. Right now, we have approximately 172 short-term rentals in all of unincorporated Clatso County, and that 10% cap would basically cap it at that level, and then through time, that level would, there would be attrition that would decrease the number, especially in specific zones. So for example, Arch Cape, I believe, I think they have like 66 or 77 short-term rentals now, they would be capped at 10% of what the structure number is, about, I think it's 23. So until Arch Cape, for example, gets below the 10% cap, no new STR permits would be issued in those areas. Does that answer the question that you were asking? Okay.
Commissioners online, do you have any comments? Nope.
I just have two thoughts. One is, I'm generally not in favor of additional rules or regulations, but I, I am. or regulations, but I, I am generally in favor of the cap on the short-term rentals. And I think that whether that goes into effect or not, might sway some decisions on the, the proposed amendment that's in front of us. I don't suppose there's any way to tie the two together, is there?
I, I think if I understand your question correctly, that you are looking for a way to tie the housing amendments to the short-term rental cap. And I, I don't know that there is a way that we can do that. We have proposed prohibiting short-term rentals in certain types of new housing products that are being proposed. But, the, the cap amendment will not track through the planning commission because it's codified in the code of regulations. And so, it goes directly to the Board of Commissioners for their two public hearings. I mean, I guess the, the planning commission could always just make a recommendation of support to the board if you would like, and we can include that in our agenda package. But, I don't think that we can tie the two together. But, I, I can check with county council about that.
Okay, I, yeah, like I said, I'm not trying to make this overly complicated. And generally, I'm in favor of, of fewer government regulations than more. But, I, I do think that some sort of a, a limit, or, or not a limit, one or the other, it, it does change the, it does change what, what can potentially happen in some of these zones. So, I just think it's important to consider.
I know that Seaside just passed an ordinance that just took an effect, but no multifamily dwellings in the future. I think it was as of January or July 1st or something, July something, will be issued short-term rentals. So, no duplexes, no triplexes, nothing else. It has to be a single-family dwelling to be issued a, a short-term rental. That was part of the housing because it's, they're trying to create more housing with less rentals. I, I, I would be, like I said, I don't know. That's two different ordinances, two different.
Well, as a suggestion, what the planning commission could do, in addition to the staff recommendation to prohibit short-term rentals in employee housing cottage clusters and caretaker residences, manager residences, the planning commission could also amend the staff's recommendation to include, say, after January 1st, 2025, no new, no duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, multifamily could be used as short-term rentals. You could also make that amendment.
Anybody else have any discussion?
In my opinion, I'd, I'd hesitate to tie the two together. I would wait till we see the, the final proposal on the short-term rental cap. And then, may, I mean, it's gonna go straight to the commission and bypass us, but we could still, if we wanted to weigh in on that, I think that hearing, which would also be a public hearing, would be our opportunity to weigh in on how, how we think that short-term rentals should be addressed. I don't know that we need to tie the two together, this, this application. It seems like that would just muddy the waters a little bit. I mean, it does have an, does have an effect, but we don't really know what that fully looks like yet.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? I guess at this time, I would request a motion, one way or the other, or, and a, and a second.
Do you have the proposed motion, motion that you could pull up?
Yeah, I do. One second here.
Staff recommendation.
See, and usually it's at the end of, uh.
It is at the end of your staff report, and that is on page 196 of your packet.
Would any commissioners like to make a motion?
This is Commissioner Satanovich. I'm here to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve ordinance 24-14 as presented by staff.
Okay, I have a motion. Um, do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, um, in amendments to this motion? Seeing none, we'll move on. And we'll put the motion to a vote. By a roll call, please.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Magyar?
Yes.
Commissioner Satanovich?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Linder?
Aye.
Commissioner Idrica?
Aye.
Chair Crushour?
Aye.
By a unanimous vote, we move to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve ordinance 24-14 as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Have one more legislative hearing before us. Does anybody need a break before we go? Okay, we'll take a short five-minute break, and then we will return in five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. All right, our next item on the agenda, um, in the third legislative hearing is, uh, this is a legislative hearing regarding ordinance 24-20 psilocybin time, place, and manner regulations. Does any county, or does any planning commissioner have a conflict of interest to report? All right, seeing none, does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time? I don't see anybody here or online. All right, staff, will you please make your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. Now that Gail has you all warmed up, I want to bring you back down. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about psilocybin mushrooms. We had talked about this earlier this year, and the county board has directed us to develop time, place, and manner regulations for the operation of psilocybin service centers, manufacturing, and farm uses within the unincorporated areas of Clatsop County. Historically, this process started twen, in 2020 with the approval of Measure 109. In Oregon and in Clatsop County, it did pass with a 55% to 45% margin. At that time, the Oregon Department of Health or Health Authority was directed to develop rules and regulations that supervised the distribution and production of psilocybin products within the state of Oregon. Those rules were established by December 31st of 2022. In that interim time, however, there was a lot of unknown information, and quite a number of counties and cities decided to put together either a permanent or a temporary moratorium proposal that needed to go before the voters within a, in a general election year. Clatsop County put forth a temporary two-year moratorium that established, prevented the establishment of psilocybin production and distribution, again, within the unincorporated areas of Clatsop County. Interestingly enough, it was almost by the exact same margin that the, the moratorium passed, is, how it was, Measure 109 was actually approved. So, that moratorium went into effect at that time, and it does end as of December 31st, 2024. Next slide, please. The county board originally considered whether or not to put together another permanent moratorium before the voters and opted not to, and instead opted to put forth a time, place, and manner proposal, which then staff was directed to prepare, put together, put out for public review, bring to the planning commission, which we are doing today. The municipalities, as I should note, all do have their own regulatory authority. Astoria, Girhart, and Cannon Beach have established some form of time, place, and manner regulations. Seaside and Warrington have temporary moratoria that are going to expire. Both of those communities have put forth a permanent moratorium. If the moratorium does not pass, they will then be adopting time, place, and manner regulations. Staff has reviewed examples of county regulations from both the Schuets and Jackson Counties. And we did it that way because the authorization for planning and the way in which planning is administered is different between the counties and cities in the state of Oregon. So, we looked at specifically the Schuets and also Jackson Counties. That has served as the model for our ordinance that has gone out for public review. We've had a number of opportunities for people to review the document. We first reviewed it here in July. We're now having a public hearing here in October. The Board of Commissioners met meetings in April and September. Both had preliminary reviews of this concept and how we put forth the idea of regulating or administering this. I also met with the Clatsop County Public Safety Coordinating Commission in September, presented the, the basic information, and solicited their input. There was an article and a public hearing notification also in the Daily Astoria. If you could do the next one, please. The draft ordinance has three main areas. The first thing it does is it defines terms that are regulated by the state. And our state has, as you know and understand, more of a top-down approach here, where they lay out what the rules and regulations are, and the counties and cities adopt comparable and/or the same rules and regulations that are administered at the local level. So, we have taken the, the definition of these terms directly from ORS and OAR, the statutes and administrative rules. The two that I want to highlight, and I'm not gonna spend a great deal of time on this, is the psilocybin farm use and psilocybin manufacturer. There has been some slight change in interpretation in this area over the course of the first couple of years. The psilocybin farm use is designed to be allowed in our resource zones. They define a farm use, they define the mu, growing of, of the mushroom crops as a, a crop, and they do allow for limited processing, but not processing to the extent of moving it into another type of product. And I'll get into that in just a little bit more. This is an agricultural activity. It includes the packaging and shipment and drying, but it doesn't include the processing of the psilocybin products into other edibles and/or other types of materials that are used in the psilocybin service centers. The psilocybin manufacturer definition does include manufacturing, production, compounding, and conversion of, and processing of the psilocybin process. That's where it becomes slightly different. And from a land use perspective, the farm use is considered an allowed use or a use that can occur in areas such as RA F zones and our F80 zones and so forth. The manufacturer is limited to areas that are more manufacturing, industrial-oriented. Next slide, please. The second thing it includes is some operational and locational restrictions. And these are rules that we have adopted that appear in other county ordinances. One, the cultivation should occur only in the structure. The manufacturing should occur also within a structure and cannot have a total manufacturing floor space of more than 2,500 square feet. Psilocybin service centers are, have to maintain all the necessary state licenses, and they shall not be authorized as home occupations or as commercial activity in conjunction with a farm use. So, that, again, separates these office-type operations from uses that are in the resource zones. They also have some general use standards, such as the, they need to have a minimum 1,000-foot setback from the property line of all schools. There's some limits on the hours of operation. You cannot construct a new dwelling specifically for psilocybin production, and it cannot be sold in a farm stand, and you cannot have any commercial activity associated with the psilocybin-producing fungi crop. Next, next one, please. We have looked at allowing the psilocybin farm use, and this is simply a proposal, and you can modify this as you deem appropriate. But, the farm use itself, we have recommended that that be an allowed use. It's like a type-one use over the counter. You meet the standards, you go ahead and do it. The manufacturing and processing, however, we have suggested that that be done through a type-two review process, a conditional use process, and it be allowed by type-two use in our resource zones and in our industrial zones. Finally, the psilocybin service centers, that's where the product is actually administered, is proposed as a type-two use in general commercial and rural community commercial zones. There are, these restrictions came, or these suggestions came through based on the comparable zones that the Schuets County ordinance had put forward and actually adopted two years ago. Next one, please. This proposal, and I'm gonna get into some public comment in just a moment, we did send DLCD the notification of a proposed ordinance amendment on August 20th. Public hearing notification was sent out and was published in the Daily Astoria on September 28th. Our first public hearing is October 8th. The first county board hearing is, assuming that there is a movement on this today, would be October 23rd. The second board meeting would be November 13th, and the effective date would be December 31st, or before the end of the existing temporary moratorium. If there is a delay from this particular proposal, we will have to look at some type of emergency declaration so that we can bypass the 30-day delay in it becoming an active ordinance. We'd prefer to not do that. We'd like to move it forward today if at all possible. Go ahead, next one, please. We've received a couple of written correspondence that I'm going to highlight for you. We, after the Public Safety Coordinating Committee meeting, Dr. Thomas Duncan from Public Health submitted a letter that was included in your packet. It does provide some background on psilocybin products, highlights the dangers from consumption of similar-looking mushrooms, that the consumption of these mushrooms generally is not harmful. However, mushrooms that look an awful lot like this can be fatal if ingested improperly. He suggests limits on, on research out there. There hasn't been a lot of research on this due to the nature of it being a Schedule One class, a Class One, uh, type drug. And so, the, much of the research that has been done has not been done in the United States. He has requested that rules focus on data collection, and that he's raised some concerns over the enforcement of this particular section. Next one, if you would, please. We have a couple of emails and a, and a letter from a gentleman by the name of Andy Still, who's a Clatsop County resident. He lives south of Seaside. He is a licensed psilocybin facilitator. He's commented on the differences between the ORS definitions and what I had originally had proposed. Based on that, I did update the definitions. The definitions I originally had in here were the ones that the Schuets County had adopted, and ORS, OAR have been amended. And the ones that you have in front of you are the current versions. They're not the older Schuets County versions. Mr. Still also raised some concerns about the availability for zoning for these types of uses. A number of the cities are looking at fairly restrictive locations for these things to occur. He also has concerns with application costs at the state. That is not his decision. That is his, his concern, but it is not something that, from a land use perspective, would be part of the findings of fact necessarily. He also has requested to add the use to be allowed in the RA zoning district, the RA5, RA2 zones. That is where his current property is located. And he's also requested to reduce restrictions on the manufacturing of the products. We can talk a little bit more about that, and I know Mr. Still will want to add some information to that, so I don't want to cut him off. Next one, please. We've also had some staff communication with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD staff. Hillary Foote has been very, very helpful to us. She is the Farm and Forest She is the Farm and Forest Specialist, and she has talked about OHA and DLCD having different authority with regards to regulating this. The OHA regulations deal with the actual licensing and the permitting and the operations, and DLCD is really more focused on the use of the land. And DLCD defines the farm use and manufacturing differently, and they can be regulated in different procedures. So that's why we've separated farm use from the actual processing of it. And I know DLCD and OHA is continuing to work on clarifications on where that line is between processing. And so what we will have to do as we move forward is continue to monitor our rules and regulations to make sure that they are still consistent with those rules and regulations. But what we are proposing right now is consistent with the current interpretations. Next one? And I think that might be it. All right. So at this point in time, staff is looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission. In your staff report on page 415 are some sample findings of facts that you may consider. One is, number one, would be that these proposed ordinance amends the law up to affect the land use of multiple zoning districts and is classified as a type-four legislative procedure. The public advertisement, number two, for the hearing was published in a newspaper of general circulation. Number three, no individual public notices were required to individual property owners pursuant to that Section 2.3020. Then I have some general findings related to how we got to this point. Number four talks about Measure 109 being adopted in 2022. The next one talks about the county voters adopting the temporary moratorium that comes to an end on December 31. Number six talks about the Board of Commissioners requesting time, place, and manner regulations be established. Seven talks about the draft set of regulations that you have before you and the proposed code amendments affect property in unincorporated Clatzip County, individual cities that have adopted policies and ordinances for lands within their respective municipalities. You can make those findings and add additional findings as you deem appropriate. There really are three options for you. One, you can, upon completing the public hearing and taking testimony from concerned parties, you can recommend approval of ordinance 20-20, 24-20 to the county board. B, you could make modifications to 24-20 as you deem appropriate. Or C, you can recommend denial of it. Or D, you can actually table it for further research and consideration. Staff is recommending approval, option A, recommending approval of the ordinance and referring it to the county board for their public hearing and final actions. The suggested motion is on page 417. With that, staff will close.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call for public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board or Luba based on that issue. All speakers from the floor to sign in. Again, Zoomers, please use your hand raise method. Public agencies first, and then we will go with public testimony. So if you are a member of the public, please put your hand down. If you're a public agency, please raise your hand at this time. And we will, please state your name, address before speaking. If you are appearing in a representative capacity, identify who you are representing, and we will limit your remarks to a period of time of three minutes in order to permit all present an equal opportunity to speak. Are there any public agencies that would like to speak at this time? I can't see. No public agencies wish to speak? I can't tell if they're public agencies or not, but. Okay. Not seeing any. Are there any comments from the public? If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand, and we will call on you accordingly. I do have Andy Still that wishes to speak. Is Andy on Zoom? Andrew?
Hello, my name is Andrew. I am not Andy Still. But if I may go ahead, nice to meet you.
Go ahead, Andy.
I'm Andrew Yora, and I've been building software companies here in Oregon for the last 25 years. But for the last two years, I've been helping this program succeed. I'm also a licensed attorney, and while I do own land in unincorporated Clatzip, I have no intention or plans to open a service center. I'm here solely to share information as to how these centers can be built. I've worked closely with service centers around the state, helping them navigate the regulatory and zonings. I've successfully lobbied the state legislature to improve the program and spent a lot of time speaking with members at the state legislature about this program. But my most active role is with Bendable, which is a nonprofit located in Bend, Oregon, working closely with affiliated service centers to provide financial aid for those seeking these services, especially veterans with PTSD. Over half of our clients are veterans. And I just wanted to share one quick quote we received this week from one Marine who said, "You've helped me change my life for the better. You're doing amazing work with veterans, especially combat veterans. This is helping us deal with past, current, and future trauma. Thank you for helping us heal." This treatment is powerful, but access is really limited. I see you've modeled your zoning on Schuets County, but that really is barely working in Schuets, and that has 100,000-person city with a huge amount of commercial land. In unincorporated Clatzip County, commercial land is scarce and expensive, and restricting these service centers to commercial zones will make it nearly impossible for them to find cost-effective locations. We've been in this program for two years, and what I've seen firsthand is what these businesses are really like. And they're basically like therapy offices, incredibly low volume, minimal traffic. Typically, one or two staff member arrives in the morning, one to four guests show up, they stay there for six hours, and they're gone for the day at four or five in the afternoon. And despite these huge impacts these services have had on the lives of these individuals, the businesses are really struggling to stay afloat. Manufacturers are struggling as well, but honestly, there's so much capacity, that's a much smaller concern than the limitation on service centers. But even with manufacturers, there's no reason not to at least make those available in GC and RCC zoning. But again, the real need is these service centers and TPM restrictions have the biggest impact. So I'd urge you to remove the prohibition on home occupation and allow citing service, allow service centers to be cited anywhere where you would allow a therapy office because the use is almost identical. And, you know, doing so also in agricultural, agricultural forestry and agricultural zones, allowing them to be used in conjunction with a growing operation, which I've seen a lot of counties do, is a fine way to make it more expansive. All of these, you know, will do huge impacts to make this work. And, you know, I want to share during my discussions with state legislature.
Andrew, we got to cut you off there. Andrew, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your testimony.
So also, please, Andrew, we need your full name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Yora, and I, my address is, well, my land doesn't have an address in Clatzip County, and I live in Portland, Oregon.
A mailing address, if you would, please, so we can include you in our.
573-5 Northeast 28th Avenue, Portland, Oregon 97211. I hope you reconsider and look at some other counties. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to comment on this matter at hand? Ordinance 24-20.
We do have a comment from Andrew, or Andy Still, and it is in the form of a video.
Hi, my name is Andy Still. I live just south of Seaside, and I'm a licensed psilocybin facilitator. I wanted to express to you a little bit about how important this medicine is and how making it affordable and available to the people who need it most is critical in this very moment. I've written a much more detailed comment with both my recommendations as well as my concerns for the current time, place, manner restrictions proposed today. And my hope is that you were able to see it at the end of the psilocybin section around page 436 of your 472-page packet. These businesses are not industrial. They are not recreational, and they don't really align with the foot traffic or the public-facing storefronts of commercial enterprises. They're small, secure, client-centered, day-use care facilities for which the state has already provided sufficient guidelines, laws, and restrictive statutes. The risks have been proven over the past years to be minimal, and the cost to communities negligible. My concerns and recommendations are that the proven benefits of psilocybin therapy and the extremely low negative impact is too critical to our county, to our neighbors, and to our families for us to make it impossible, unavailable, or unaffordable for them to, through time, place, manner restrictions and restrictive or overly restrictive zoning laws. For their sake, we need to restrict less and allow the existing laws to keep us safe, secure, and feasible. Please reach out to me and ask any questions that might remain. It's my desire to serve this community while providing this mental health option for so many of our neighbors and friends who suffer from depression, anxiety, PTSD, other trauma, end-of-life fears, and so many other mental health concerns. I hope that you'll help me get there.
Okay. I have an address for Andy. Do we need to read that since he did not?
Yes, if you would, read that into the record, please.
33452 Bearman Creek Lane, Seaside, Oregon 97138.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to make a comment on this issue at hand? Nobody? All right. We had no public agencies to respond. Does staff wish to respond to any of the comments?
Mr. Chair, just very quickly, one of the concerns that Mr. Still included in his letter was he would like to open it up to residential zoning districts. Staff would have some concerns with that, just simply because of the unknown nature of the operations. Most of the operations that have been licensed within the state of Oregon, a vast majority of them are located in urban areas, whether it is City of Hood River, the Dalles, Corvallis, Albany, Eugene, Bend, Portland, Hillsborough. Those are much more urban areas, and the difficulty in my mind is that the more we open it up, the more difficult it will be for us to monitor and administer the rules that we're establishing here. The staff would not be in favor of opening it up to all residential zoning districts.
Thank you. Are there any final questions, witnesses, or staff?
I have a question about how Warrington and Seaside are, what they're proposed, what they're proposing, and I guess that'd be in November when that's going to occur?
Yes. Commissioner Johnson, I appreciate the question. The Warrington temporary moratorium and the Seaside one also expire on December 31. And so both of those local units of government have put forward a permanent moratorium proposal, but they have a time, place, and manner ordinance ready to go in the event that the moratoria do not pass. They've approached it from a licensing perspective much more like we had approached short-term rentals. So they are not seeing it as, they're not viewing it in the same terms as we are. But again, city versus rural perspective on administration. So again, that's why I went through the county regulation samples.
I'm just thinking here that, I know we're up against the clock, and it would be, I guess it'd be beneficial, in my view, to know what our neighbors are going to do in Seaside and Warrington, what they're deciding, rather than just doing something that may be completely different than our neighbors who will also live in Clatzip County, what they're doing. So I'm not exactly sure how to handle that.
I could address that if you would like, Commissioners. The cities of Astoria and Girhart and Cannon Beach have opted for time, place, and manner regulations that are similar, not identical, but similar in nature, where they're restricting to certain zoning districts and regulating it through an over-the-counter permit or a conditional use permit process. So what we're proposing is comparable to those three cities in terms of process. The numbers aren't exactly the same, and procedures are slightly different, but it's comparable. The other two cities are opting for a moratoria approach first, and then their back plan is through a time, place, manner regulation. I don't know the exact nature of those two proposals. I haven't seen those. But what we're proposing is similar to how the, those other three cities are addressing it.
Do you have a continued moratorium? Does it require a vote?
Yes, it did. And we missed the opportunity as far as deadlines for this particular process or this particular general election. The way that the rules were written is you can establish a moratorium, but it has to be done through a vote of the general population at a general election. It can't be a special election, can't be one of those that we sneak around and hide in the middle of August when no one's looking. It has to be at, in one of the major election years, so even-year elections. The county would have an option to go back to the voters at some time in the future if they wanted to do something more restrictive, say a moratorium.
What happens if we don't meet that deadline of December or the moratorium?
Yep.
Or the vote?
So here's what happens. If this does not move forward in a reasonable timeframe, and again, I'm not trying to back you into a corner here, then the state of Oregon, OHA, would be authorized to provide licenses in areas in the county without any local review. They still would have to look at the zoning classifications, but we wouldn't have any way to control or regulate them until we had some type of time, place, and manner regulations in effect. So for instance, if we do not move this forward, come January, there could be licensed operations that are approved by the Oregon Health Authority that could go in and then would be essentially grandfathered in. That is part of the, we initially started this back in April, and the idea was that we were going to have a two-tracked approach, where we're going to have both a moratorium on the ballot and then this time, place, and manner proposal as the follow-up. However, the county board did not opt for the moratorium at a later meeting date. So we then completed our initial review in July. There was some discussion here. We brought it to the, the full version of this to the county board in September and then scheduled this as soon as we could after the county board got their initial review of it. We don't like to surprise them, so they're fully aware of what is kind of coming down the pipe. Again, the idea is there would be a gap. I don't know that any places would be licensed in that timeframe. I don't know, but there is that potential.
Could you give us a short version of what, you know, what would be allowed where in what you're proposing? I mean, a lot of this says it's subject to standards in Section 3.990, just different types of, a lot of it's type-two. With farm use, it's just outright allowed.
Right. So the actual production would be outright allowed. The manufacturing, those types of facilities do need to be licensed by the Oregon Health Authority. And as part of that, they do what's known as a lux. And as part of that, they do what's known as a LUX, a land-use compatibility statement, which says, are there any requirements at the local level that they have to go through? And if we have time, place, and manner regulations in effect, we essentially say, yes, they need a conditional use permit, or they need a type-one permit, or whatever they need. Um, if we do not have time, place, and manner regulations, it'd be my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we wouldn't be able to say no. Am I correct in that? Because there's no regulations affecting it.
I think it's, um, state.
Yeah. It would go to the state then, and the state is gonna determine whether it meets their criteria, not the stuff that we establish here.
So does it, what happens in a type-two procedure? Is that something that comes to the planning commission?
The type-two procedure that we're looking at is just the neighborhood notification process, which is, um, we do initial intake to make sure that the application is complete. They have all their necessary licenses, et cetera. Then everyone within a certain distance around the property is notified of the proposal. They get an opportunity to comment on that process. Similar to what we were talking about with the housing. Um, the staff does a review and if anyone wants to appeal the decision of the staff, the director, uh, they then can appeal to the hearings officer and then to the county board and so forth. So it's essentially a public review process that gives the neighbors an opportunity to comment. Um, there is, if we do it as a type-one over-the-counter permit, it has to be clear and objective standards and criteria. If it's a type-two, there is a little bit of interpretation of code that is involved there. And so that's why we have that opportunity for public comment, too.
So we're addressing farming, cultivation, and distribution. So we're essentially, this one ordinance pertains to three different zones because we have the ag forest or whatever it is. And then I'm assuming that since it can't be in ag forest or residential, it'd have to be in a commercial zone for distribution. I mean, one business would have to have two different locations or so, or... And are we going down the same path with that? Is that?
Commissioner, you're absolutely correct. There are different types of uses. The farm use is proposed to be allowed in what we typically call our resource zones. Um, the manufacturing and processing is all restricted to be inside. We've suggested that those are a type-two review and those would be allowed in, um, both the resource zones and in the industrial zones. And then the psilocybin service centers, the distribution sites, we've suggested they be restricted to, uh, to commercial zones. And so we are looking at different types of uses in different types of zones. So if, for instance, you had a piece of property that was zoned EFU, exclusive farm use, you could do the farming with an over-the-counter permit.
But you have to have an existing structure, twenty-five-hundred square feet or less?
Up to twenty-five-hundred square feet and...
Can't be a new structure built for this specific reason?
It cannot be a new residence built for this. It can be a new structure. It can be a new structure, not a new residence.
Is that wrong?
Yeah. So, um, and so you could, in those three uses, with a type-two review, you could do both the cultivation, growing, packaging, and processing if you go through that type-two review process. The only thing that we have separated out at that point in time is the actual distribution. Um, and like I mentioned, most of the distribution centers are located in urban areas and not in rural sections of the state of Oregon.
Just for lack of knowledge, is it like a doctor's office? I mean, is that?
What I have read?
I had another concern, because in one of the comments, I think it was Andrew, said, you stay there for one to six hours, you receive your treatment, and then you leave. I think those were the exact words. I mean, at that point in, I think it was one to six, maybe it was five. Are you required to just, you just leave? Are you under the influence at that point? Or, I mean, and is it like a doctor's office, where you go in and you receive treatment from a doctor's office? And if you are getting narcotics or something like that, you're required to have a driver? I mean, is that what a distribution center?
The distribution centers, those sorts of regulations are covered by OHA and are not the land-use portion of it. But yeah, typically, what I have seen of these centers is they operate like a doctor facility, a doctor's office. They don't like that term necessarily because doctors are not facilitators. They're not doing the facilitation. And so, um, from our perspective, we viewed them as an office-type commercial use. And that's where the staff recommendation came from.
I'm gonna give Andrew an opportunity to respond to that question, because I'm curious. And he's, he's...
Yep.
...made some comments that he would like to answer that question, so. Andrew, can you answer with that?
Sure, you bet. Um, so, and typically sessions are six hours. Um, rarely one. Therapy is, you know, a regular therapist is one. Um, but every client puts together a transportation plan with their facilitator and through that plan, it lays out all transportation and clients are never allowed to drive on their own, so someone will pick them up. And, um, it's very much like a doctor's office or really a therapist's office in that it's a room with a bed in it, not really anything else. Um, and, you know, typically, it's just one or two, maybe three or four people at most. But there is, just to clarify, there is no distribution. Um, the product is delivered to the client at the premise. They consume it at the premise. They're not allowed to leave the premise with any product in hand. And they're not allowed to, you know, they work with their facilitator and at six hours, they decide if it's okay to leave. But even so, they won't be driving a vehicle. They will be picked up by whoever was designated in their transportation plan.
Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate that clarification. I have less concerns about the, he said it's not a distribution, which I agree. It's more of, let's call it a therapy office of sorts, rather than the manufacturing and the cultivation. Those are my concerns, um... About this whole situation. Where does the federal law lie on this now? Are we similar to, you know, not legal federally?
Correct.
Oregon, it is legal, kind of like the marijuana laws?
Correct. Yes. Um, and that raises some other interesting points about this that go beyond the traditional therapy sessions. Um, there are at least some reports of tourism associated with it. And I think that that's been a concern raised by some. Uh, from our perspective, doctors' offices and those sorts of things are generally, again, in commercial zones. Uh, they aren't typically in, um, residential zones.
When this was made legal in Oregon, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, but was it, this has to be administered by a person who has obtained a license? It is, it cannot, it was part of the law when they voted in, it cannot be distributed? To the, like dispensaries and stuff like that?
Correct. It was limited to the service centers. And the term distribution, I may have misused that, but essentially, they're not being given it, but it is being provided to them in that location. And, uh, yes, the facilitator is licensed, they have to go through some training, and the sites are highly regulated and controlled in terms of, uh, security, locking up, uh, all of the materials, uh, tracking everything, security cameras. I mean, there's a very long list of rules and regulations that those service centers have to meet.
Through OHA.
Yeah, through OHA, that we wouldn't necessarily be doing the inspections on. We're simply going to ensure that they have the necessary license to start.
Are there other types of review processes that could be implemented? We have allowed use and then just type-two listed here. What other options?
They tend to get more restrictive beyond that. Um, then there's a hearings officer-type conditional use permit review and there are reviews that you receive and so forth, but those are all much more intense and also much more costly in terms of the application fee.
So if someone owns a piece of property out in Lewis and Clark or somewhere in the Ag Forest area and their neighbor wants to build a barn and start doing this, will they be notified before and have a chance to be opposed or for the issue? Or with the type-two, is that?
For the farm use, they would not be notified. But for the manufacturing or processing of it into other materials, they would be notified of that.
So farming and cultivating are tied together?
Correct.
And then cultivate or process?
Processing and...
So it could be farmed, cultivated, and then shipped away?
Mm-hmm. Correct. And I think that gets a little bit to this concept of it being a crop. You know, similar to a corn. You grow it, you process it to a certain point, and then it is shipped off to be made into something else.
And it does have to be done inside? We were, I had that question before. So wildlife has no access to this. It is completely indoors.
Other than what they would normally see in the woods, no, they would not. The cultivation is done inside, yes.
Does anybody else, any other Commissioners online, have any questions for witnesses or staff? All righty. Oh, maybe?
Yeah, actually, this is Commissioner Satanovich. Um, you know, I'm coming at this from a lot of different angles and there's a lot to process here. I'm a veteran. I have lots of friends that are veterans and some of those have, you know, benefited from this. It's not particularly something I've researched that much until, you know, today, so... But I, I guess I'm curious, the service center portion of it makes me think of a therapy office. And I guess that's where my concern is more than the, I think we, you know, the ability to do the farming and then processing, having the application process for the processing. I guess my question really is, is there a mechanism to allow for this? I guess I'm gonna call them service centers. I'm not sure if that's the right term. But in more than commercial areas, because we are very limited in commercial areas per county, but with a stringent application process, I don't, you know, I go beyond type-two. I don't, you know, I'm not sure what we would call that, but I feel like there's opportunity here to regulate it, but also help the people that really, that it was supposed to benefit. Um, and I've learned a ton today, by the way. Thank you, guys, all that have been participating in this, because I didn't know much about, you know, the processing and whatnot. So, um, I guess I'm just looking for a mechanism to allow growth, processing, and, uh, service centers if it was regulated enough, if we have an option to find a way forward with that.
Is this kind of like a conditional use thing is what I think is what she's asking? So like someone wants to do a business out of their home, is this part of that conditional use?
You have the authority to add this as a conditional use to other zoning classifications if you choose to. Uh, staff had not originally incorporated those to try to find a middle-of-the-road approach to this. Uh, but you do have that authority to do that if, as some type of conditional use permit review. Um, I think there are some restrictions and I would want to go back to DLCD to talk about the service centers and distribution sites in resource zones. And that's something I would like to, if you decide to do that, I would like to confirm that with Hillary Foot before we move forward on it.
In my opinion, I'd like to review, um, other processes, like such as conditional uses that may be able to implement. And, you know, I don't particularly like that it's just flat-out allowed in certain zones and then just a kind of a, uh, agency review type-two. I'd rather have some more oversight and say, and, uh, community input in some of these types of facilities where they're gonna be placed. But I don't know what DLCD has to say about that or if there's already Oregon law statute regarding what can be controlled in an AF zone, for example, or any of those zones.
It's my understanding that the service centers weren't, and Brett, if, yeah, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, but service centers would not be allowed as, um, commercial uses accessory to farm use. That term is what I recall Hillary mentioning. Do you know? Sorry, Brett. I apologize.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Brett Estes. I am the North Coast Regional Representative for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And thank you for taking on three code amendments tonight, this morning. Um, Mr. Blake, um, I don't want to speak exactly that. That's my general understanding, but I can't confirm that. I really want to be able to defer to, um, Ms. Foot as to that, as she's the specialist in the psilocybin arena. I can't a hundred percent.
I think we could confirm that, too, with a conversation with Hillary.
So with that in mind, uh, what does that do, the timing?
Um, what that does is, um, that puts this back, if you decide to table it, it puts it back to the November Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we would have to have the county declare an emergency to...
Not necessarily.
No?
So there, well, there's two options. So, uh, one thing that we could do is, we could do the process that Jay has talked about, where we push the, um, first reading off, move it to the December Board of Commissioners hearing, declare an emergency, and have the ordinance effective immediately after December eleventh. Uh, the second option would be to, um, draft the changes that we're talking about today. And we could submit them both to your Planning Commission and to the Board of Commissioners for their November meeting to go through the normal two-step hearing process, knowing that there might be future amendments that come forward. So we can amend, you as a planning commission can make recommendations to the board to amend ordinances. The board can also make recommendations to amend ordinances. As long as the proposed amendments are not substantive, um, we can proceed on the pathway. But as soon as we get into issues that are changing policy, that are different from what we have advertised, then we need to go back to the beginning and start the advertising process over. I don't know if that made sense, but we have a couple of pathways that we could do to meet the December thirty-first expiration of the moratorium, so I wouldn't...
There's no way for the Ford to unanimously vote to extend that moratorium?
Yeah.
At all?
It would have to do, it was done by voter referendum.
Yep.
Well, Gail, just as an example, what you're saying, I think I understand what you're saying there, but I just want to throw out kind of a wild example. If we were to say, uh, you know, after today's meeting, you know, we recommend, uh, the approval with amendments, you know, that we put on there. Um, if that was to say we want everything to be typed two-A or type-two or what, you know, all the way down, is that too much of a change that you would have to go back and begin the advertisement process again?
No, that would be fine. The concern that we would have is, uh, for example, if the board got to the second reading and then decided, um, only at that second reading, that they were going to make substantial changes to the ordinance, then we would go back, re-advertise, and do the two hearings before the board again.
Okay.
But the Planning Commission today, or if you table this till November, could certainly continue to make amendments to it without having to restart the process.
I'm generally okay with, with, um, the, the, what's in front of us today. My only thought would be, um, I think it might be good to expand the zones, keep them as a type-two, but expand where the service centers can go. I'm looking, actually, one of the things that's nice about actually being here instead of with you guys today is I just pulled up, uh, the county map and I'm looking at the amount of general commercial and RCC land that there is and there's a few.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yeah.
I think we need to close the public testimony before we go on to Commissioners' discussion.
Okay, sure.
Hold on to that for one second and are there any final questions for witnesses or staff? I don't see any. So I'm going to now close the public, uh, testimony at this time at twelve-thirty-seven PM. Okay, Commissioner Linder, please continue with what you were saying now that we're in the, uh, open discussion for Planning Commissioners.
Yep, sorry. Um, my only thought is I would like to maybe see a few more zones, um, available for service centers, keeping it as a type-two, but I wouldn't even have a clue as to what zones to look at because we have so many. Um, but like I say, I'm looking at a map right now of all... Um, but like I say, I'm looking at a map right now of all of, both the general commercial and the RCC zones, and that doesn't give people a lot of options. So that, that's just my thought. Of course, the balancing act of this is that we're only dealing with the unincorporated areas of the county, and that we're gonna have, you know, probably some, at least a couple cities that will, that will allow it there. So maybe it's less of a concern than what it make it out to be.
Commissioner Linder, uh, there is an option of adding tourist commercial, neighborhood commercial as other options, too?
Okay, and if, if I could, just for a moment, Rebecca, could you bring up the table? That's on page 428 of the agenda package, please. That will show the, everyone exactly what we've, the staff has proposed, and then that will help us focus changes that you might want to make.
My research has indicated, too, that the manufacturing process is not a water-heavy user, a user of a significant amount of water. Um, and, but if we do a type 2, local water districts, again, would be notified of, of the uses if they do occur within their service area.
What about the byproduct?
Uh, it's, as I understand, my, with my discussion from people is that the, the pro, the farming and propagation doesn't produce anything that isn't natural. I, I'm not aware of any significant contaminants that are associated with the processing into, um, edibles, or teas, or, or anything like that. Um, so I, I cannot answer specifically, but as I understand, I know that the propagation and growing does not produce anything that isn't natural.
I'm just curious if, like, if you're gonna manufacture and process in an ag forest and you're out there, does this require a septic system, or do they just run everything out onto the ground? There's a lot of, you know, streams, wetland areas out in that area. I'm just curious as to what the runoff is.
It would, it would have to be managed just like any other waste from a house or a, a business through a septic system and/or some sort of commercial or a community sewer, or sewer system?
Are the, are the service center locations more restrictive than licensed therapists?
The, the service centers are the licensed, oh, as far as like a regular licensed therapist operation? In our commercial zones, almost all of our uses are type 2 uses in commercial zones. Commercial uses, um, that's one of the things we, we've looked at, is whether or not that's necessary. But the way that our ordinance is set up is that most businesses are required to go through a type 2 process.
Okay.
And in, in rural areas, there are restrictions on the size of the operations. Um, again, the idea being to promote the development of urban areas over rural areas in terms of overall state policy. So they try to restrict the size of certain types of commercial uses in, in rural areas as well.
Do any commissioners have anything that they'd like to comment about this table here, or, or change, or?
My, I would like to, uh, talk about the conditional use process. And it'd probably be my preference that, um, in each of these, that they be moved up to the conditional use type application, just so, um, everybody could have in, input on it. Um, if you're gonna grow mushrooms from, or whether you're gonna open up a manufacturing and processing facility or a service center, that community and the neighbors could weigh in on that and talk about the effects that it may or may not have on, on, on their property or the value of their property. And, and, um, I guess, uh, there's other, or other jurisdictions that are looking at more permanent moratoriums, um, but we don't know what they're gonna decide and what, I mean, the voters approved a temporary two-year moratorium here. Now we're looking at whether or not we want to enact this, you know, come up with some land use rules. And I think that, so we're not, we're not able to do another extension on the moratorium, um, because we did not, the Board of Commissioners didn't send that to the voters to decide that. So here we are, we're trying to look at what may or may not be allowed. So I, I'd lean towards making it more conditional use in these zones. Um, but I don't know what authority we have in the ag forest or F-80 or exclusive farm use zones from DLCD, you know, what, is that already regulated by a higher body, what's allowed there?
Commissioners, I can, I can answer that a little bit. Um, in terms of the resource zones, they're probably some of our most restrictive zones that we have in terms of, uh, development and use, and, and their design for preservation of the ag, uh, uses and, and the forestry uses. And so developing them is, is almost always a, a type 2 use. Anytime there's a, a template test or a house review, it's quite often a review where everyone around the property gets notification. Um, that's not necessarily the case if you are doing forestry or ag operations. For the most part, unless you're doing, uh, building construction in, in those areas, those types of uses are not regulated, and you don't do the notifications to surrounding property owners. And, and that was really the rationale, in my mind, by doing the farm use definition and saying, okay, though that is consistent with other crops, we would allow it and not do the, the review. But as soon as you start to process it, then we move into, um, a different type of category of use. And, and even though the processing here isn't involving heavy metals or any of those types of processes, it still is a different type of land use from actually growing a crop. And, and again, the, the argument could be made, uh, it may be like a winery. I'm growing the crops, but if I'm sending the crop somewhere else to be processed, it's just an ag operation. But as soon as I turn it into, into a winery with a sipping shop and stuff like that, then it, the, the review process, uh, changes dramatically. And so that's kind of how you might think of this, is that there's a crop portion of this, a processing portion of this, and a consumption portion of this. And, and so that's, that's why it's set up the way it is. You could certainly add other zoning classifications where the, uh, service centers could be located. Uh, you could make an argument that it would be appropriate in some industrial locations. We have some zones that are RCC, light industrial and commercial, kind of a mixed zone. So I mean, you could make some arguments to add it to those areas if you chose. Um, the type 2 review process is the, the next step above an over-the-counter permit, and that is where notification is sent to surrounding property owners. So they get a, I believe it's a 10-day review time, where they can turn comments in, and those then become part of the formal staff review. The ultimate decision on that comes to the department head, uh, the director of the department. And that person, that decision then is appealable to, um, people, um, such as the, um, I'm missing the term, the hearings officer, and, and so forth. So you can modify this, uh, the way that it was set up is simply because I looked at it from a farming, processing, and distribution, uh, categories.
I have two questions. We'll get back to that one in just a second, but, so we have, they, they have 100 acres out somewhere in, in, in one of these areas, 2,500 square foot building. Can you build 10 of those 2,500 square foot buildings?
Um, the way that it's written is one, uh, limited to 2,500 square feet.
I saw that it was limited to 2,500 square feet, but it didn't say per parcel. I think it just said the, the building has to be indoors, or the, the farming has to be indoors, and limited to a 2,500 square foot. Um, so if I've got 100 acres out somewhere, could I build 10 of these buildings and have thousands of square feet, a, and really ruin what is designed to be ag forest or, or, you know, um, EFU? Because if you have, then it looks to me like it's a commercial or industrial site. Um, and then the other question I had is the, I, I get allowing the farming and cultivation in, in those zones. I don't, I don't understand where we came to get the manufacturing process, because then, to me, that, that seems as if that's an industrial activity where I get farming and, and whatnot, just like, you know, logging. If you're gonna log out there, you're not processing it out there, you're not, not creating mills out there. It, to me, it relates to the same type of, uh, stuff, so I, maybe that's big questions for you, but those are, those are my, two of my biggest concerns.
You, you raised a couple of very good points. The per parcel concept had not thought of. And that, I, I will take a look at that, because I, I do think, um, the, being able to divide your property and then putting, uh, one of these out there, I, I think that's a, a loophole that we would certainly want to look at. Um, most of those zones, however, have fairly large tract requirements of, say, 38 or 40 acres, or 180 acres, or so forth. And so the numbers in those zones would not be on five-acre lots or one-acre lots or anything like that, uh, in those resource zones, because the minimum lot size requirements are significantly larger. But we could certainly look at that number of, uh, buildings associated with the project.
Yeah, I love our, our areas out there. I'd hate to see like a, a industrial zone as a loophole in, in, in the...
Yep. And, and the second question, I forgot. I, I apologize.
The, the, the manufacturing in those zones.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Because like I said, instead of logging out there, you know, creating the mills and doing everything out there, they'd bring it to industrial zones, they do their processing, and then they ship it out to where it goes to the retailers. To me, that seems like more appropriate.
And, and you would have the autho, you would have the authority to remove the type 2 manufacturing from the AF, F-80, and EFU zones. You have that authority, absolutely. That's, you have the ability to be more restrictive.
Are there any other commissioners that, that share the same concern as far as, um, I, I mean, we, I don't want to see 30 of these buildings up on, uh, a piece of farmland that we've seen as, as exclusive farm use for as long as any of us have been alive, and then all of a suddenly, you know, there's a loophole in, in the ordinance to where somebody who buys these and says, uh, okay, I'm gonna go wall-to-wall. I, I get that there's, you know, percentages and all that, but you can put a whole bunch more prop, or buildings on a, at 2,500 square feet and still maintain those, those setbacks and, and lot coverage percentages and all that. Um, and then the other part is, is the manufacturing process. I'm, I'm, I'm not for that in, in the, in those, those areas. I mean, I like to preserve our natural resources just as much as anybody, and I, I really appreciate those areas that we have.
I, I would tend to, uh, agree with several of the last comments, uh, from staff and, and from my fellow commissioners. I, I would, as, as a person who lives down Young's River Road, I don't really want to see, like, a whole bunch of mink farms come up again, you know? Like, I think it's nice that the mink farms are covered with blackberry brambles, and you kind of almost don't see them anymore. But I think ag, AFF-80 and EFU, I would love to maybe see those type 2, um, removed and, um, not, not be allowed at all for manufacturing and, and processing. I think that sounds like a great idea, and just leave the processing to the, the other zones. And, uh, I would tend to sort of agree with, uh, you know, not, not restricting the, the, the psilocybin, um, farm use, because we can't really restrict anybody else's farm use. And, and since the, the AFF-80 and EFU is heavily restrictive, uh, I think, um, keeping the, the farm use, um, allowed in those, uh, zones is, is good. I kind of like what the staff has put forth here. I know there's been a lot of discussion about kind of hedging your bets on whether maybe we can make it one way or another, but I think that's a nice, solid, middle-of-the-road kind of solution. Uh, I, I might even call it an elegant solution if, if we could eliminate some of the psilocybin manufacturing and processing, uh, from, from ag forests and exclusive. But that's just my take on it.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, I think what I'm hearing in general is allow the farming in, in the resource zones, put the manufacturing in industrial and manufacturing zones, and put the psilocybin service centers in commercial zones. We, I, like I said, we could add tourist commercial and neighborhood commercial as, as two other options, um, in that area. Uh, in the, what I hear from Mr. Magar is to remove the manufacturing from the resource zones. That is within your rights to do that. And so if that's your direction, we can bring that forward. So however you want to modify the, the chart here by either adding zoning districts or, or removing from certain areas, that's your prerogative, and we'll carry forward your recommendation.
This is Commissioner Sotanovich. So I'm just gonna, oh, go ahead, okay. Um, you know, this one's a struggle, because I'm really not generally in, I'm generally not in favor of restricting more, you know, but this one really is, uh, kind of difficult. So I guess I'm looking at, you know, the, so I have friends that have, you know, let's say forest 80, and they already, um, you know, use it, um, in a way that's allowable. So let's say they decided, hey, yeah, I'm gonna use our, uh, you know, go ahead and grow these, these mushrooms. And then I look at it like the manufacturing, I guess I don't know enough about the manufacturing process to say that it shouldn't be allowed there also. I'm thinking of things like, like Beekeeper, right? They get their honey, and, and they actually process it and make it, and right there at their, their farm or their house, or some, you know, some of those kind of uses. And so part of me is like, I don't feel good restricting something of that nature, you know, that's really just a farm situation. But I guess the word manufacturer makes me think, you know, what, what is that process? You know, what kind of chemicals are we introducing to it? I mean, if it was, um, I don't know. This is a really difficult one, quite frankly. And I suppose the, the, the trade-off would be if we took away some of the manufacturing. I still would advocate for adding in the service centers in a way that, you know, allows, you know, a, a type 2, uh, a service center and some, some other, uh, zonings, you know, so that, that these could actually get to a point to where they're actually being used as they were intended by the voters, you know, so.
Another thought, I would, I'd really like to see the word "distribution" taken out of this ordinance, just because it's, as, as Andrew pointed out, that's not the correct term, because that could end up down the road, causing some issues, I think. You know, maybe, um, administration sites, or, or...
Yep.
Does that make sense to everybody? Because I, I don't want to see
I agree.
...distribution sites approved. Um, I, I agree with, I, I mean, I, I think in restricting in the ag forest, the forest EFU, I, I don't think we're restricting the use of, uh, the drug or the medication or, or whatever you want to call it, because it can still be brought in if we're allowing it to be administered in these, these areas. Um, the thing that we're, and, and we're proposing to allow, the, the farming and cultivation in, in farming and cultivation zones, um, I really would like to see a limit on that building size, or, or the amount, maybe, I, I don't know how to make it fair, maybe an amount per acre or one per parcel. I, I don't know what's fair on that, because if someone owns 10,000 acres and you can only put it on 2,500 square feet, that's probably not i- in equal use. Those are my concerns. I, I, I definitely think we take the type 2 out and make it not, not allowed for manufacturing in those three zones. I'm not opposed to adding the service centers in a couple of the other commercial zones only, and then the forest, as long as there's limitations on it.
When you're finished?
No, no, that's, that's just my thought.
Do we know, is this considered an agricultural product?
Yes, it is a crop, as defined by, yeah.
So we were talking about allowing it in a, something that's called a forest zone, which would technically take it out of forest production and have it, you know, growing, uh...
One, one might argue that forestry is also a form of, of, of crop production.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and so, um, again, because of the restriction on the size, it, the, the impact to a, a fairly large tract of F-80 land is, should be minimal. I mean, relatively speaking, it's not necessarily taking, uh, 40 acres out of production. And I think that's part of the, again, the size restriction. Um, I, I would, to comment, I would say, uh, one per tract, or one per parcel. Um, I, I would to comment, I would say, uh, one per tract or one per parcel, depending on what the correct term is in our code. Um, and so that, that would be the way to probably restrict it based on, in those larger zones, the F eighty zones and the AF zones, the, the tracks are significantly larger in terms of their minimum area. So you're not going to get, um, thirty buildings lined up next to each other, for instance, to create in a de facto industrial zone. Um, again, if I could summarize, what I'm hearing is take the manufacturing out of the resource zones and add the service centers to other, the commercial zones that are available in the county. It, that's kind of what I'm hearing. And restricting the number of these buildings per tract.
That is my personal opinion. I, I mean.
And I'm, I'm trying to glean from all sources. Yeah, yeah.
I can get behind that. Yeah. I think that's a fair, from, at least from my perspective, that's a fair assessment of where I'd like to see it.
I'd say that sounds good on my end, too.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with segregating the, the type two from the farm use. I've, I've seen other examples of that, you know, e- especially in Northern California, uh, with the legalization of marijuana where rural areas are inundated with, um, uh, what starts to look like more like a, an industrial complex. So it's very insightful of you to bring that up.
I have a question. In EFU right now, could I come to the planning commission or the, the planning department and say, hey, I want to cut down my property and plant hay or wheat or blueberries or apple trees or anything else? Could, is that, because that's a farm, that's an agricultural use, could I, i- in an exclusive, or sorry, in, in a forest zone, could I come and, and do that?
Right. I'm asking you.
Yeah, I believe that in a forest zone, there are farm activities that are permitted.
I have a question about the administrative centers and adding them to other areas, tourism, commercial. I feel that tends to be a whole program. Or that new guy, and I don't know our, it's all fire, so.
It's a very valid question.
Where is tourism, commercial?
There are a number of scattered tourism commercial sites throughout the county. Most of them are along Highway thirty and Highway twenty-six. Um, from my understanding is that they were old commercial stop by site, sites. You know, there would be a restaurant or a, uh, an old motor lodge there. And so they were essentially providing services to the tourists who were coming to the region. And, uh, many of them are no longer being used for commercial use. There's a, a number of vacant tourist commercial sites along twenty-six and thirty, um, that are not being used at this point in time. So, um, there's, there's an area around Camp Eighteen that has a, a number of, probably three or four tourist commercial properties in that area, for instance. Um, your, your point about i- is tourism the right thing, that's not the intent of what this was originally designed for. And it's not being restricted. It, there's nothing that says you can't bring people in from other places to benefit from the perceived me- uh, medicinal benefits of, of the use here. Um, it's not supposed to be designed for that, but people are coming from other areas to Portland to experience the, the use. The county is also not going to be able to regulate. We don't have the bandwidth to regulate who's going in, if they're from here or not. And so that's, that's really not a, a focus we can, we can look at here.
And keep it in commercial zone. If I know anything about our, our, our board of commissioners, they're, they're going to dissect this as well and they're going to read into this. Um, my, my thought on the, on this ordinance would be to, um, make some amendments that, that all of us have recommended. And I, I don't know how we go about doing each, each individual one or as a whole. Um, but my thought would be to pass this to the board of commissioners to prevent any more time delay, to prevent anything from slipping through the cracks because I, I, I have confidence that our commissioners are going to really look into this, take it very seriously and, uh, and dissect anything they really don't like.
Again, for the record, what I would like to do is I would like to bring a revised version of this with your ideas incorporated into it to the, the board of commissioners. And, and what I'm, again, uh, just quickly summarize is to take out the processing out of the resource zones, add the service centers to other commercial zones and continue the manufacturing in our manufacturing and industrial zones. I'm also hearing from at least one or two of you that a restriction on the number of these buildings per tract or parcel would be appropriate as well. And I can incorporate that into the recommendation that goes up to the board.
And then they can make an informed decision as to how much they would allow or not allow, correct? I mean, is that, is that, is that how it works at that level? They don't have to, they can make that motion at the next meeting and then it doesn't delay the timeframe? Is that correct?
That is correct.
My view is I'd like to, I, I, I agree with a lot of that, but I'd like to see more of it, more of a conditional use in, uh, for the manufacturing, processing and the service centers because I, I know that I don't necessarily want a service center going in next to my house or, you know, there's just places that they may be appropriate and they may not be appropriate. So I would, I would tend to lean more towards a conditional use side of things, which I know is a more onerous process. But I think in this case it, um, it's not as much as a moratorium as some of, uh, others, others are considering.
So i- if I could add, a, a type two is a, a form of conditional use permit, but the final decision for approval is, is handled at the staff level. There is a public review process. People get an opportunity to comment. And the decision that's made by the, the director is appealable to another body. And, and, and so that is, that is what the type two process is. The type three process is, uh, the hearing notification and then it's reviewed by your organization. And, and, pardon me? Oh, excuse me, the hearings officer. I apologize. The hearings officer. And, um, that, that process is a little bit more expensive and cumbersome, but it is a, an option. Um, that type two A process as it sits right now. So if you want to do a type two, it would be handled internally within the staff. Then it would be appealable to the hearings officer or you have the ability to say it should go directly to the hearings officer. And, and that process is, I don't know what the fees are at this time, but it is more expensive.
What's the, you know, what's after that? It comes straight, straight to the planning commission?
It comes to the board of commissioners as an appeal and then to the, yeah, then it would go to the land use board of appeals.
Is there, there's another type of process where, where it would come to the planning commission?
Yeah.
Is there not?
No, under, under the code, the conditional uses go, if there is a public hearing, they go directly to the hearings officer.
Okay, that, that went away. We did away with that.
It's, it's been that way since at least twenty eighteen when I started. So the po- uh, the planning commission is really more the policy recommendation body, which since you've had three big public hearings today. But unless of the, in the weeds on your property, let me see what you're doing, we send those to the hearings officer, uh, and let them. Either way, there's still a public hearing. Either way, the criteria are still applied. Either way, um, residents are able to express their concerns in a public forum and have the rule of law applied to them with regard to a particular case.
What about the notification? What's the difference in the notification?
Same notification. So if, if the planning commission were acting as the hearings officer and reviewing each parcel that came in that wanted a psilocybin thing, the notice requirements would still be based on the zoning of that parcel. So either two hundred and fifty feet or seven hundred and fifty feet, same amount of time for public comment, same procedure. Uh, it's just that we keep the planning commission focused on the big picture policy issues and let the hearings officer go down the rabbit hole of somebody wants to do this with their property. Seventy-five people have turned up against it because they don't like the color blue on the barn. And, uh, the hearings officer gets to sort through all that instead of the planning commission.
That's a two, two.
That would be a two A, yeah.
I just want to say, let's not introduce any two As into any of this. I don't think, uh, I think county staff is, is well equipped to handle this with a type two. Um, that's just my opinion.
Any other commissioners like to comment?
I would agree with Commissioner Magyar. I think the type two, at least for what we're looking at here, um, should be sufficient. Um, I, I can see maybe i- if, if at some point we were going to allow some home occupation stuff in residential zones, maybe something beyond that. But in a, in a, in the commercial zones, excuse me, I just don't see a reason to go past a, a type two.
Okay, so i- i- if I can recap just for the record, so as far as our discussions go, if we choose to move forward with a recommendation, it would be allowing in, in the resource zones with the regulations of so many square feet per parcel or per land, um, to be determined by the county board of commissioners. Uh, we're going to take the type two, uh, permit out of the resource zones for manufacture and process. Real zones. And then we are going to keep it a type two application in the commercial zones. Um, you're going to possibly add a couple more commercial zones that I, I think are irrelevant to yes or no. I, I think that they're still a commercial zone. Um, i- is that a good recap of what we're, we're looking for, a motion for or, or not?
Mr. Chair, I think, uh, to, to bring it all together, I think you've done a good job summarizing it. Uh, what we would be looking for then would be a motion to recommend to the county board an amended version of this with that criteria that you've outlined there. And then as staff, I will take that, revise the document here before it goes to the county board. And just for your own benefit, I will send it back to you in, in November so you can at least see what the county board saw too. Just, uh, just to make sure that you fully agree and I can, you know, uh, present a, a, hopefully a thirty-second summary for you that doesn't take as long as I have today.
With that being said, I, I think that we've had a really good discussion and though we have some differences of thoughts on this matter, which is great that everybody has a little bit of a difference of opinion, that's how we're going to come to the best conclusion, I believe. Um, I, I think that we've come to a point to where we can either request a motion in a second or we can go with one of these other options, um, as the planning commissioners that we had the, the four options. I'm, I'm personally for the, the recommended, um, with the changes. But, uh, I can't make a motion and, uh, is there any commissioners that would like to make a motion or a recommendation or anything that they've thought of on their own?
I, I'd like to make a motion to move forward, um, with the recommendations that we've, we've incorporated today.
As far as the ordinance twenty-four dash twelve as presented by staff with the changes.
Correct. Twenty-four dash twelve.
Twenty. Thank you.
Twenty-four dash twenty.
Twenty-four dash.
Twenty-four dash twenty.
Wow.
Third typo?
It's wrong.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. We will go with the twenty-four.
It is twenty. I apologize.
Okay. I, I have a, a motion on the floor that we recommend to the board of commissioners to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash twenty as re- presented by, or with amended, uh, with our recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I didn't hear who that was. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Linder.
Commissioner Linder. Okay, we have a second. Um, our requi- our motion, I have a second. Discussion and amendments. Would anybody like to make any amendments to the motion or discuss it further?
Um, I just want to say that I'm going to oppose the motion just simply because I, I would like to see it more restrictive in what we allow here. That's my, my personal preference. And, um, so I understand that we'll, there's differences of opinion and all that and I respect everybody's opinion on the matter.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to comment? My only comment is that I, I agree with Commissioner Johnson completely, but I also don't want to be caught up in a, a battle against time. Um, I believe that with, with what we have presented to us, I think that this is pretty restrictive as it is. It limits what we can and can't do to a very small amount of zones. Um, a- a- and although I would like to see several more regulations put in, in effect and I would like to see what our fellow, um, neighbors are going to do as well. Because I, I think that that's very important, um, but it sounds like we're already at a split of what some of our neighbors are doing compared to other neighbors. Um, I would like to keep the horse in front of the cart and, and move forward. That's, that's my only comment. Um, any other commissioners? Do you have any discussion or amendments? Okay, not seeing any. We're going to put the motion to a vote, uh, by roll call, please.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Magyar?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotanovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner Iteka?
Hi.
And Chair Kraschauer?
Uh, yes. And with that being said, with a vote of one, two, three, four, five, six to one, the, uh, the motion passes with amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your discussion.
Okay, now I have to find my place. Where we were. That concludes our public hearings for the day and we will move on to, uh, project status report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there really are no updates on the project status report. Uh, it's provided for informational purposes and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Um, we are going to move right on to directors' reports.
Um, there's also included before that, uh, just an update on our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five work plan. Uh, for the planning commission members who don't, uh, haven't been through this process yet, every year along with our budget, the board approves the work plan for the land use planning division. And we bring that to the planning commission for your review and input before we send it to the board along with our budget request. Uh, but the, we try to give quarterly updates so you can track where we're at in our progress and, um, just see how the department is moving forward and the work that we're doing. Uh, so that's been provided, uh, in your packet for information per, informational purposes as well. And then moving on to the, uh, director's report, uh, most of what I put in the report, we already talked about at our public hearings today. So not a lot to report there. Uh, Jay, I don't know if you have anything to update on the EOA, the Economic Opportunities Analysis?
We have a, a couple of public open houses and you will see the Economic Opportunities Analysis next month. And the idea is to create an economic work program moving forward for the county to diversify and expand our e- economic base.
Okay. And then, uh, again, going back through the director's report, a couple of things I wanted to highlight is that, uh, the short-term rental caps, which we've talked about, uh, the board did give direction, uh, to staff on September twenty-fifth to move forward with an ordinance so that will, that ordinance would cap the short-term rentals at ten percent. And then, uh, there would be a separate ordinance, uh, that would occur in January to increase the fee for the two-year permit from five hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred dollars. The reason behind the proposed fee increase is that, uh, the work being done by staff is being subsidized basically by the county taxpayers when it comes to. being subsidized basically by the county taxpayers when it comes to processing short-term rentals and enforcing the requirements. Uh, so the board agreed to increase that fee. That will happen January 8th. The cap ordinance has two public hearings, November 13th and December 11th before the board. And then just an update on FEMA's pre-implementation compliance measures, our friend the PICOM. Um, we, we have finally gotten the training schedule from FEMA, so uh staff will be attending several trainings. Uh, I'm going to do one in person in Tillamook on the 21st and then I signed up for every one of their virtual trainings, so hopefully we'll be able to glean some information and uh get some training on that. The board is having another work session on November 6th to discuss the PICOM. They still have not chosen a path forward, which we need to do by December 1st or we default to the habitat assessment that applicants will prepare. Um, so we have that. October 28th, the City of Warrenton is doing a town hall, I believe it's at the high school, I think, uh, at 6:00 PM and they're going to be talking about all things FEMA and it's going to be a joint town hall with Chair Quila and Mayor Balance Seifer. Uh, so 6:00 PM, again, I think at the C, uh, not C side, Warrenton High School.
October 28th, is that what?
Yeah, yeah, at 6:00 PM. Uh, and that's all I have to report unless you have any questions.
All right, any other commissioners have any question?
Expect to have any new information at that October 28th?
Um, maybe something might come out of the trainings, but I expect not. They're gonna, we're going to be covering the buyout, the changes to the floodplain map, uh FEMA's risk 2.0, which is the program they're using to increase the flood premiums uh to compensate and actually capture costs. Um, and there may be a few other things, but I don't expect anything too new.
Okay. Thank you for that. And we are going to move on to our item eight that we've added to the agenda is nominating a vice chair. I don't know how this goes, can anybody, commissioners or any commissioners open now to nominate somebody as a vice chair?
Yeah, a nomination does not need a second, so you just can nominate someone.
Can anybody make those nominations?
Yep.
All right. I will nominate Kerry Johnson.
I'll second that.
Can I nominate somebody?
Yeah, you absolutely can.
Now the vice president will, in the event of my absence while I'm chair, become the chair during the meetings. Um, that's the role of the vice president, correct? Or vice chair?
Yeah.
Vice president, vice chair?
Yes.
Not president. Um, any other nominations? Do we put it to a vote?
We do, close the nominations and then put it to a vote.
I will close the nominations and put it to a roll call vote and our only nomination is Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Magyar?
Yes.
Commissioner Satnovich?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Linder?
Yes.
Commissioner Itika?
Yes.
And Chair Crushhour?
Absolutely, yes. And thank you Commissioner Johnson for being willing and able and um stepping up. Appreciate it.
Um, before we adjourn, Chair, uh, if I could just have one additional minute. Um, so next month we will be having the public hearing for the Economic Opportunities and that should be your only public hearing. Uh, December, we'll be bringing back the second draft of the Clear and Objective Standards. Uh, so no public hearings so far in December. They should both be fairly short meetings, November and December. Um, and then uh we'll move into January, we will be doing the third um draft of, of the Clear and Objective Standards and then doing that public hearing. And then sometime probably in February or March, we'll be looking at the updates to go 16, 17 and 18. So just to give you an idea of what we've got planned over the next few months. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any good at the order? Nothing? We'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you.